...town of Bay Harbor Islands, November. Town council meeting, no order. We are gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a special guest who's going to recite for us. Right up there, there's gonna be a microphone. Awesome.
Turn it on. There you go.
All right.
Take a bow.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Very good job. It's time to get us ready.
Hold on, honey.
Hold on, hold on. All right, there we go. There we go. All right. Rowan Albernetti, right?
Albertini.
Albertini, I'm sorry. I just know you as Rowan. So, eight-year-old student attends the third grade at Roof Cape Rod K-8 Center. You're a proud member of the gardening club and gifted program. And in your spare time, you enjoy a great basketball game with friends and playing the piano. Now, I also know that you also ride a bike, because I've seen you ride the bike across the street, which is awesome. So, that's definitely cool. And as a small token of our appreciation, I wanna give you this certificate of appreciation for reciting the pledge. Thank you so much. Are you at Bay Harbor? Awesome, awesome. You gonna take a picture? Hold on, please. Wherever you go, there you go.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I'm three, one, two, three, one more, and three.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Gobble Gobble. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Yaffi.
Here.
Councilmember Tricochet. Not here. Councilmember Salver.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Fuhr.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bruder.
Here.
Mayor Leonard.
Here.
All right.
Just, um, we know that Councilmember Tricochet is not here, because she unfortunately had a friend that passed away recently, so she won't be here tonight. We have requests for withdrawals, deferments, and future agenda items. Anyone?
I will mention a few pending items that we're looking forward to seeing come back again. One of them is addressing the code on lighting for the buildings. Some of them are very bright. And Marlene, I think you were working on that. Is the new co-director taking that over now?
No.
No?
That's something that, it's a planner.
A planner?
Yeah.
Okay.
We were gonna look at it. I don't think that we have anything specific to the ground floor. That was the issue.
Okay. And also, we were looking at noise from the generators. So, that's still pending. I'd love to see something on that soon. And then, a new thing that I would like to discuss is the underground parking in the new construction buildings. You know, several of the newer buildings had floods after Irma. And I, you know, like to hear a little bit about that, because I think it's a hazard and it's almost a consumer protection item for new owners.
All right. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, I would like to bring up in January in regards to workforce housing. A lot of residents have mentioned this, that obviously, Bay Harbor, because it is a great town, one of the, I guess, the downside is for some people that are longtime residents, that they may feel that they might be necessarily priced out or whatnot. I have talked to the planner over the last month or so about the possibility of having an ordinance pertaining to this, and I'd like to have that be an item in January. So, I just wanna, if, you know, assuming there's no disagreement with that. All right, we're gonna move over.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry. Just January, I'll be bringing up an ordinance pertaining to workforce housing. Town manager's report, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Brea is from Mellon Wealth Management, he's gonna give his report.
Mayor Leonard, before we continue, I think items number...
Yeah, which items? Who are we gonna defer?
Thirteen and...
Eighteen.
Eighteen have been taken off the agenda.
Thirteen and eighteen?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, but thirteen is being deferred, correct?
It will be brought back at some point.
Okay, thirteen's gonna come back, probably in January. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Dan Brea from BNY Mellon Wealth Management to report results through September 30th of 2017. The average current yields of the town's portfolios is 2.32 percent. The index is 2.42 percent. The average yield to maturity or yield to call for the town's portfolios is 1.94 percent. Benchmark is 2.10. And the duration for the town's portfolios is 3.69 years. The benchmark is at 4.05 years. Year-to-date, the contingency fund is up 2.11 percent. The general fund is up 2.07 percent. And the water fund is up 2.09 percent. Benchmark is up 2.34. Annual license and seption, the contingency fund is up 4.50. The general fund, up 4.53. And the water fund is up 4.66. Benchmark is 4.73. At this point, I'll take any questions?
Any questions? All right, great. Hearing none. Thank you so much, Dan.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Have a happy holidays.
Likewise.
All right, next, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Dave Cussera's on his way. He said the traffic was heard bad unless he's in the room right now.
I don't see...
I'm gonna go right to discussion on concrete poles.
Great, well, we'll do is we'll bring them up when it comes up. Sure, as soon as he's here. Great.
Before I start that, I know you, when you have your reports, you're probably all gonna mention Veterans Day. I just was a little remiss that day not to thank one of the people who really helped put that together, was Bridget in the back of the room. She almost managed to not... It was a nice event, nicely attended, and she almost knocked herself out putting together the sound system, but she really handles everything, and she did a great job.
Thanks, Bridget.
We had a meeting with Florida Power and Light to discuss the possibility of putting concrete poles in the rear yards. The engineers came with their, with the area representative. The engineers, right now, were quick to explain that, right now, that the policy of Florida Power and Light is not to put concrete in the rear yards, for the simple reason, they can't climb the poles with the spikes. They call them spikes or climbers. So, I did some research myself and found that the poles that can be manufactured with climbing pegs or climbing ladders. We discussed it. The engineers really aren't against the idea. He says it's really a policy thing. We discussed possibly a pilot program where they could, you know, try it someplace. And they said they would be more than willing to discuss that and put it forward after they looked at it a little further. Secondly, once it's, once they make that decision and make that request, it would have to be passed through a couple of committees. One of them is the linemen, who discuss all things with the poles, climbing them and how they work on the lines. So, it's, if it passes muster with them as far as safety, then there is a possibility that it could, they could consider it. The cost, again, would be similar to what we did on the perimeter road when we replaced all the wood poles with concrete. There really was no downside. The idea was, you know, for their point of view, they're durable, they're more weatherproof. It would be beneficial to them not to have to hassle on the rear yards with replacing poles, because they stand up much greater and longer. And they pretty much would hang wire just as they do now. Someone has to go up, if they have to put a transformer up, they get in the backyard and they basically hoist it up, so, with block and tackle. We did say that we would meet, because there's been some turnover at their, in their organization, we're going to look to meet with them about vegetation. I know there's some things coming up to change the code requiring, you know, how we're gonna look at making sure that people do cut and trim their yards when it comes to underneath the power lines. But it's, we wanna meet with them again and see what, again, we can do to have them or assist them to make sure that when something has to be chopped down, it gets chopped down. The catch-22 is always, once it gets too close to the power line, it can't be touched by somebody who doesn't have, has to have that qualification. And often, if you don't do it, FPL's a little reluctant to go into someone's backyard. He says, "You can't come in my backyard."
So, let me ask you, in April, right, right when, you know, the vegetation and everything else is going, why can't we, if we, we can look up and see that a lot of these trees, I mean, I can look around my own neighborhood in my own yard, which I already know I have to cut back. I know we need, you know, we need to cut back. If we could have maybe the people within our town in April start to tell them, and then we can go back in May, and if they, by that time, if it's too high already and it's into the wires, let's tell, you know, FPL in May, giving them plenty of time before the hurricane season really hits us, so that when the hurricane is actually upon us, maybe we have a better chance of not having as much damage as...
I would agree. The, some of the palm trees, even if we prevent people from, you know, with a lot of the new construction, we're not allowing that kind of planting to go on. But nothing stops somebody from putting a baby palm tree in what nobody's looking in the backyard, and lo and behold, a couple of years later, it's 25 feet tall. So, it is difficult. Marlene can certainly speak to code, he's not allowed to go in. I'd love to be able to use a drone, but we're not allowed to. So, I'd make it a lot easier. And it becomes, you know, from the street, it's very hard to tell whose backyard a tree is in until you're in the backyard. And unless you have a cooperative neighbor that's tired of the power going out, who normally gladly invites us in and says, "That's the tree," and then we have a little more to go at.
Right, that's, I was gonna say, that's the key. It's, you have to check your own backyard and your own property, but also, if you see your neighbors going a little high, hopefully, everyone is able to communicate with their neighbor to ask them as well to keep it trimmed down, or at least maybe they'll talk to us as well. Because the problem we had last time was, it only took one person who let their trees grow a little bit longer, they got up to the cord, up to the wires, knocked the wires down, it knocks out the power.
Yeah.
It's always good, it's your, it's the weakest link, you know? You could have everybody do everything right, you just need one...
Ron, I'm sorry. A couple of weeks ago, FPL sent in crews along the perimeter streets, at least on the West Island, I don't know if they were on the East Island as well, and they cut back a lot of the royal palms, you know, pretty well to keep them out of the, right, to keep them out of the power lines. They did leave a hang tag on somewhere on my property, and I had mentioned that to you, JC, but it wasn't clear to me whether they planned to come back and go into rear yards or whether, you know, they, and I have no problem calling, or whether they were asking individual, you know, property owners to call them to come back and whether...
I'm not sure, I'll find out.
So, I was just curious about that. It's, no, no, it's fine, I just, but I thought maybe if you find out some additional information, we could put that in the, in one of the town's newsletters and on the website, contact information so that if you are concerned about, you know, treason, overgrown foliage in your own backyard or on your own property, there's a contact number to invite FPL in to do some trimming.
It's a, they're really, they're very sensitive to public comment or public, you know, what people say about them. They have the right to do it, but they often don't exercise it.
Right, but if we're telling our residents who to call so that they can have them come in, because if FPL was only concentrating on the perimeter, which I understand, because some of those large royal palms have knocked out power repeatedly. So, I'm glad they trimmed them, but I'd like them to do more.
One thing that did come of the hurricane, when they were reviewing, especially on the East Island, they're removing, I'm sorry, they're, they found that a lot of the laterals that service the interior lots were overstressed, particularly here where you would have one lateral that was serving three streets. So, they're splitting those off now, so, similar to the water system where you put extra valves in to isolate a section, that'll be occurring. It's gonna take about five months to do, but they're gonna be really trying to narrow it down. When you do have a problem, it'll knock out less homes or less accounts. The, I don't know if you noticed, the underground, not the, well, the undergrounding between the East and West Island, that's operational now, and they just started to take down the gear overhead. They topped the poles. But part of that whole updating was to really, they're servicing the town now with two ways that we're getting electric, from two separate circuits. So, we don't, in the past, if Miami Beach went out or the feeder from the beach went out, it used to take everybody. Now, we get the power from both ways, and it's a redundancy that they built in, part of that project. So, that was a positive thing. And they're putting in more automatic switches, so if a palm frond does come down and hits the wire and does a short, they can, it'll automatically come back and restart itself. The palm frond stays there, it's not gonna, it won't clog, but these are just some of the things they're doing now.
Will these updates be completed by, before the next hurricane?
February, February.
That's what they're telling you?
Yeah.
Can we, in like, do you remember years past, we used to have Hurricane Preparedness Committee, and we used to have that little booklet that told us all the things of what to do?
Disaster preparedness.
Is that right? I think that maybe we should have in either July, you know, like a check, almost like a checklist for everybody. You know, get your batteries, get your water, you know, check, like, if we could put that into the newsletter, like, just as a removable piece, so that people can stick it on their refrigerators to get themselves ready...
I find, I find the postcard mailers are very effective, because they don't get them regularly when they come. They tend to read them, so we could do that, too.
Whatever, what you wanna do, it's so that we can, you know, get our citizens ready in case we have another hurricane.
All right, great. All right, we're gonna move on to the council reports. We'll start on the end. Josh?
Okay, I'll try to keep it quick, because we have a long meeting tonight. First of all, happy holidays to everybody as we enter into the holiday season. I, over the last month, I was over at the farmer's market a couple of times. First of all, anybody who's not visited, it's been wonderful, it is growing, please visit it. It has become a nice success, and it's right off of Kane Concourse now, right in front here on Bay Harbor Terrace. The Veterans Day event was fantastic. Bridget, thank you. Ron, thank you. Everyone, thank you, and thank you to our veterans. We had a good turnout, and it was really a nice event.
I can't hear you, Josh.
I apologize there.
I'm getting old, I'm getting mad.
Pizza with the cops was, again, this was Kathleen, this was your baby, so it worked out nicely. But the pizza with the cops was a nice event. I encourage everybody to keep on coming out. We really need more and more people to come out and take advantage of this event. We do this regularly. Kathleen, I'm sure will tell everybody about it every time, but make sure you come out. It is a great opportunity for you to learn a little bit more about security in Bay Harbor and to meet your officers. And finally, I attended the Miami Dade County League of Cities Board of Directors meeting, and again, wish everybody happy holidays.
Great. Bob?
I wish you all a happy holidays as well. I was at the Miami Dade League of Cities meeting earlier this month. Bay Harbor was one of the sponsors. This month, we get the opportunity to do that, you know, once a year, and, you know, talk to all of our fellow elected officials in the county about how great Bay Harbor Islands is and some of our neighboring communities as well. So, that was a great event. Thank you all, you know, to the town administration, Bridget, Ron, Marlene, everybody for putting on the Veterans Day ceremonial event on this past weekend. I thank all of the veterans who came out, and Ron, I appreciate your recognizing all of our town employees, who are veterans not only in the United States, but who have served in military elsewhere. As Josh said, the farmer's market has been much improved this year, particularly, you know, now that it's out on Kane Concourse and in front of Town Hall. It's a great event, so those of you who haven't had the opportunity to come out, please do so. You'll see some activity on Kane Concourse, just a couple of new businesses that are getting ready to open, looking forward to that. Chocolate shop down the street and some other businesses, so look forward to that. Start looking at a lot of our businesses as the holiday season is coming up, and hopefully, you know, frequenting and shopping in some of our businesses on Kane Concourse. Thank you.
Great. Stephanie?
Also, I wanna wish everybody happy holidays. I wanna let you know as well, the chocolate tears should be open hopefully by December. We also have a new Pilates...
That's right.
After the chocolate.
After the chocolate or before the chocolate, you know, it's the holiday seasons, but we have a new Pilates studio in town, and they're running a special at the moment, so please take advantage of the special that's running. And, you know, the Bay Harbor Drugs also has beautiful gifts for teachers or for anybody that you need. We really, you know, would love to have you guys, everybody support the merchants within the town, you know, buy gift certificates or actually go in there. You'd be surprised at all the wonderful things that you can find within the town. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Kelly?
Since the last meeting, I too attended the monthly League of Cities meeting, and the pizza with the police and the veterans event, and they're all great events for us to network and learn. And I also am one of two council members. Councilmember Salver and myself serve on the pension board, along with three employee members. And I'm the newest member, I've only been on plus or minus a year. But our consultant made a statement that should make everyone very happy, and he said that out of the 24 plans that he administers, we were the only one to beat the actuarial assumption, which means that due to, not my doing, but my colleagues and Mr. Short, our finance director, many, many years of disciplined, conservative portfolio management. So, you should be very happy to know that out of these 24 plans that Bay Harbor is setting the benchmark for others. So, that made me feel very good.
Great.
Isaac? All right, good. Yes. Yeah, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues about the events that have taken place here in Bay Harbor Islands. I got to attend briefly the League of Cities, and pizza with the police was very, very good. Just to mention something that took place there, there were, you know, we had a little group of teenagers there, which was very enlightening and very, I guess, heartwarming to see them come to an event like that. They participated and they shared experiences with us, and I know that I definitely learned something from what they had to add, and I enjoyed spending time with the police, both the leadership and the rank-and-file guys. This week, I'm fortunate, from November 15th through November 18th, I get to represent the Florida League of Cities at the National League of Cities City Summit in Charlotte, North Carolina, which runs from the November 15th to the 18th. It's the first time, I think, somebody from Bay Harbor is actually going to that, and I'm going, and, you know, representing the Florida League as the second, as a second vice president. I get to attend this conference. Since I'm representing the Florida League of Cities, I get to attend the conference at no charge to taxpayers, it's fully underwritten by the Florida League of Cities. And I look forward to bringing you back a report about the experiences and the classes and the seminars that are gonna take place there, and, you know, hopefully, we'll make you guys proud.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Also, attended the Veterans Day event. I thought that was, it's actually one of the, I think, one of the best events we do every year. Also, attended the last League of Cities meeting, for which I had the pleasure of presiding over. It's also interesting to mention that the main topic that we discussed was actually FPL and concrete poles. So, it's very noteworthy that your council's attending events and learning about things that we're discussing later on, so it does serve a purpose. Next, I believe it's next month, I'll be attending the Florida League of Cities meeting. I just wanted to let my colleagues know. I believe you'll be attending, too, Isaac, I'm sure so, because we're both on the Florida Board. That being said, happy holidays to everyone, and hopefully, we'll get done with the meeting promptly. We have next, public comment, and we're gonna start with, we have John Vedder.
And for those of you who don't know, public comment is any discussion item that is not on the agenda. You get three minutes for specific items on the agenda. You speak during that item, and you have two minutes.
That's okay, we'll share, we're close.
That's fine.
You need one. No problem. Yeah.
That's right. You wanna share?
Share.
I'll share with staff.
John Vedder, 1035 West Bay Harbor Drive, Bay Harbor Islands, Florida 33154. This is my first time being here since Irma, and I wanted to thank everybody for, when we came back, after it was over, feels like nothing happened. I'd also like to thank the police for going around with their bullhorn, telling everybody to evacuate. We evacuated. Some of our neighbors did, and we saw groundwater come out of their exhaust pipes. Okay. So, I have, I know there's a long agenda tonight, my agenda is long, because it's based on walking around. And the first picture is Sereno from my bedroom window. I've raised this a number of times, I keep being told that they're gonna lower their lights, but nothing more specific than that. I ask who's been held responsible for this, because the town approved it, and I get no answer. This code remains the same, those are the next two pages. Crosswalk, I'm having a really tough time with lately. I have chronic vertigo, and, so, this particular event instance, I walk up to the crosswalk, I push the button, I wait for the walk sign. It turns green, I walk. All of a sudden, cars are coming at me, and I'm like, "Shit." Excuse me. But I got an adrenaline burst, like you can't believe. And when I cross the street, I look, the police are directing the cars at me. And I'm like, "What the H?" After the two police pictures, there's like a Porsche Cayenne. Again, same thing, I push the walk button, I step down, I go, "Ole." His window's down, I'm like, "What are you doing?" And he says, "I have to make a right turn." I'm like, "I have a green walk sign." Next picture is of cars on the crosswalk with guys trying to cross. Sometimes, when I take their pictures of them in the crosswalks, they get mad at me. I ask them if they'd like to go over here and talk it over with the police station, it's right here, and they always refuse. This light at West Bay Harbor and Kane Concourse, you can't even see it. You can't hardly tell if there's a light there or not. At West Bay Harbor, this building, construction project is covered up, the walk sign, the button, and I can't even get my hand in there to push it, because it's on the other side of their construction fence, and I don't know how a company gets to take private property. It goes on and on, but it's pretty self-explanatory with the pictures, and I appreciate...
Mr. Vedder, just, yeah, even though your time is up, I strongly recommend that, why don't we take one of these, and our co-compliance director and our chief of police are here, maybe you should have them take a look at it and address all these issues one by one, because obviously, you can't, yeah, and I think that would be appropriate. And let our day-to-day staff handle those issues individually.
You can have it, I can have it.
Okay? All right.
And let me add one thing, Ron, just one thing, if you can just follow up, special emphasis on everything, it's a lot of photos here of companies parking on the bike path and everything else.
Yeah.
That's something we have to make sure we're stopping immediately.
Yeah, so they can, they can deal with that. All right. Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. Vedder.
Next is Kathleen Kennedy. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Kennedy at 9180 West Bay Harbor Drive. I'm here to give compliments. I wanna thank Josh, Bob, Jordan, and anyone that, oh, Stephanie, for listening to me over the weekend. We're not gonna talk about it tonight, because there's an issue coming up tonight that's very dear to me. But first of all, I wanna thank the great job that was done for veterans. Patrick, you got a sunburn, you did an amazing job. Sean, Ron, the staff, Bridget, amazing. Hopefully, as the mother of a colonel, West Point graduate, next year, I sat with a chief today, we can do some things with real soldiers jumping out of trucks or whatever and make something nice. I've tried to do it before, but for some reason, it doesn't happen. Be nice to see soldiers parading down our streets and talking to our children. Okay? My daughter wanted to do it one time, but communication broke down. So, you know, let's do it. She has gone to the school, she has done mentoring in with Dr., with, what's her name? Oh, shame on me, Dr. Rodriguez. And she's going to meet with Mr. Saperstein, and this is what we need, mentoring shift with our kids. So, hopefully, next Veterans Day, we'll have them big old green trucks out there, and we'll make this town the best town it's ever been, which it is now. But thank you, thank you, thank you for reaching out, and I know sometimes my phone calls are not always the greatest, but I have a lot of respect for anyone that returns a citizen's phone call. Okay? If somebody's here, somebody that's not here, but I'm not going to say anything, but I'm a little disappointed. But thank you and happy Thanksgiving. I'm out of town, so it's going to be peaceful. The flowers are beautiful on the Kane Concourse. Ron Wasson, you have done one amazing job. I can't wait to see the Christmas lights. It's beautiful. I'm so proud of this town, you have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next we have Frances Newhat. Is that?
Frances Newhat, 1060 Kane Concourse. Since council has not allowed public discussion on either planning and zoning board church-by-the-seaside plan approval, nor alleged affiliation with the BDS movement, the following timeframe may possibly link Bell Harbor Shops 200 million expansion and our small town being destroyed, our restaurants and retail. On March 2004, Bell Harbor Church by the Sea acquired Bay Harbor Islands Church by the Sea at 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive for future growth. April 2005, council upzoned the gateways on East Bay Harbor Drive from 65 to 75 feet BFE, directly benefiting Church by the Sea. April 2014, hotel developer purchases 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive Church by the Sea, their three lots for $12 million. In November 2014, Bell Harbor's Church Board approves demolition. 2015, Bell Harbor Church torn down for Bell Harbor Shops $200 million expansion. It was a battle between Historic Preservation Board and the church. January 2016, Bay Harbor Town Planner approves mixed use on the property at Ocean Cadillac. February 2016, Bell Harbor Shops purchases torn-down Church by the Sea, which is 27,000 square feet for $30 million. February 2016, Bay Harbor Island Government passes anti-BDS movement. May 2016, PNC Board, they motioned to defer the site plan because in the code it did not allow, it only allowed 100% retail on the ground floor. On June 2016, Bell Harbor Government passes anti-BDS law. On June 2016, Bell Harbor's Church by the Sea purchases Ocean Cadillac, their eight lots for 20 million. 7/19/2016, the PNC Board approves Church by the Sea plus or minus 70,000 square feet approval without council accounting for ancillary usages, including 168-seat restaurant, car lifts, and a variance in this liquor store in close vicinity. On November 2016, again benefiting the church, approval to allow religious lobby on the ground floor and allegedly threats to church lobbyists using Rilupla law to take over the entire property. On January 2017, benefiting the church, council eliminated requiring religious counsel, religion of having council public hearings before they're put on the Kane Concourse. And January 2017, again benefiting the church, council approving religious primary signs on the ground floor. After all this is said and done, the question is, what will be, what will council be doing next with tax exempts to damage, these damaging decisions that you are making? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That is the end of public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Dave's here, please.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, oh, Dave?
Dave, sorry, just here.
All right, Dave, you want a minute or you want to, you're ready to go?
Listen, I've been out of breath before.
All right, all right. You're up.
Thank you.
How's traffic?
It is horrible, I would say.
So it's normal?
Yeah. Well, I got two accidents instead of one, so that was good.
All right. Thanks.
Good evening, how are you, Mayor?
Good evening.
Members of council, wonderful citizens, Bay Harbor Islands. I, thank you. I wanted to appear before you because each year we try to appear before the council to talk about upcoming sessions, some of the wish lists, and that is why I'm here today. Just to let you know, as you know, a session begins early this year in January, so we're right around the corner. We're going through a couple of committee meetings now and a couple of the bills have already been set up. So just to let you know, and following this, I'll have a report, talk about what we talked about today, so you can review it and peruse through the issues. And a lot of the issues, I'm pretty sure I know where we stand. We work with the Florida League of Cities, as you know, and we try to do a good job. Everybody bands together and try to prevent a lot of harm that could be done to municipal government up in the legislature. But a couple of the bills that have been filed already early on, which you, you know, want to look at and want to review is local government transparency bill. It'll revise the legislative auditing committees, it'll fiscal transparency requirements, local governments to post certain voting record on their websites and other things. So I'll get you a copy of that bill so you can take a look at it. We'll get it through the town manager and we'll take a look at that and see if there's anything in there that disturbs any of you or is of concern and we'll go ahead and deal with the legislature on that. Second is House Bill 9, which is a federal immigration enforcement bill. As you know, it's called the Sanctuary City Bill and many of you have already heard, you know, what they're trying to do is they're just trying to enforce the federal laws and making sure that the different municipalities and counties are doing what was supposed to and was intended to do with the federal government. There's a lot of issues as it relates to that, as you all have heard nationally, and so that's something that we're going to follow very closely. Both of these bills are already passed its committee, so you know that the House is ready to do business on that, but I don't, I haven't seen any excitement or palate to do anything on the Senate side. So hopefully we'll work the Senate and make sure that, you know, our issues are addressed if any kind of a bill like that does move forward. Cities and counties are in the same situation, so we'll be working together. It's a pretty big team that you've got out there. And other bills, the weapons and firearm bills always find a way to surface. Campaign financing bills will be filed, growth management, homestead waivers, public financing on construction projects, and public meeting records, just some of the basics that always get fired, filed every year. But we'll keep an eye on them and you'll also get a detail of the bills and the analysis that comes through on those as well. At this point, what I'd like to do is, I know many of you have had a year to think about it, some of your wish lists, some of the things that have concerned you, hopefully I'll ask some answers. If I don't, I'll get back with you. If it's things we need to look after in Tallahassee, that's what we'll do, that's what we're here for. So if I may, open the conversation with council.
You know mine.
That is?
One of the things, I think, we've spoken before and Dave and I spoke last year and I spoke with Ron as well. I want to have a see what we can do as far as putting a new bill in front, as far as an exception to the, to the public records sunshine law, as far as in the event that there is something, a discussion that deals with security or safety, that there would actually be a closed session. A transcript would be kept and could be obtained through court order. The intent here being that in the unlikely, highly unlikely event that there is a situation, for example, at our school, we would all be able to participate beforehand in helping, assist, and understand, and plan what the response would be. There is currently a plan, obviously, that is not public record from the police department. But at the same time, if there's anything that we can do to assist, we cannot by law have a conversation without it being open and open to the public, which would-
Ms. Kennedy.
Which would then essentially put people at risk. I think we're better off having the ability to have a conversation and see if there's anything we can do to assist for the security of the school or for any other portions of the citizenship without it being accessible by someone who means to do harm. So this is one thing I've been talking to Dave about, is trying to see what we can do is getting a bill filed, getting sponsors for essentially additional security for the citizens of Bay Harbor and-
Is that filed yet?
No, we're, we've been talking about it for about a year, he's trying to see, I know.
If I may respond, because one of the great things and great opportunities to be able to talk to each one of you on, as a needed basis, is that I get time to do a little bit of research and since we've spoken and we've been having a dialogue over this to see how, you know, interesting it is to the council and yourself. But just took a quick look at some of the statutes and if I may, if the town attorney, you know, you might know a lot more about the sunshine law than I do, but in looking at it, we're governed by 286, which is the public meetings statute, and then we're also 11907, which is exempt documents. So in looking at, what I saw in a general capacity was that 2860113 says that a portion of the meeting that would reveal security system plans or what have you is already exempt. So what I'm trying to say is we might have some tools in place already that might address these things. As you know, it's a lot harder to try to pursue a bill.
Right.
But if there is a way to take a look at the current statute and be absorbed within that, it makes it a lot easier.
You mean administrative rule?
Well, the issue, yeah. But the issue becomes, there, those are exempt except not if we were actually going to have a group meeting, and that's the problem right now. And so there's, we would need to have, in other words, right now you could have an individual meeting one by one by one, but there's something lost in that. In other words, the ability to be able to sit down and cohesively be able to create a plan or understand a plan as best to respond in an emergency situation would be lost and instead it becomes a game of telephone where we have to meet individually. So by being able to have it as a group and obviously protect the, protect the public by having public records available if there is a real reason for that person to have a record on quest for that specific meeting, you have a transcript, but it would be an in-camera inspection with a judge if they need it.
That's if they, yeah, challenge the public denial.
If somebody, if somebody says, I have a purpose that I need to have the public record and that's dealing with security, and what you and I have talked about so that people understand, we're not trying to hide anything, it would, there would be a record kept, a full transcript, not just, you know, notes, a full transcript, but the idea being that if someone has a reason for it, they can go in front of a circuit court judge and ask for it to be released. The judge would take a look and see if there is a real reason for the public to have access to what our plan would be in response to any-
And they would do that under any condition. In other words, even if we created a specific, you know, scenario for this, that would be probably one right.
Right, and that's the, that's the defense for them, yeah.
But 119 does say that, it does address security, so, and these are all security reasons. So in other words, if we have a security plan that we're putting into place here, under the shade meaning, I think you could possibly have whoever is intended to be there in that meeting, council, manager, police chief, whoever it might be that's setting up that program can meet without public-
But we were talking about that and it's right now, unless we find some other way around it, the understanding is it would have to be individual as far as elected officials. That's, that was the problem. So we were, we were, we were talking about, so unless we have some way that we're actually able to all meet, then I agree.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't, we'll, I mean, we'll do it.
Well, the point is, let's have a continued discussion with Kathy because I think there might be an avenue to get back to that.
I don't think there's anyone against that, so.
Josh, I'll make the suggestion. I'm going to get together with Dave whenever we can mutually meet, see if we can accomplish the purpose by amending one of the provisions instead of a new bill, as long as we accomplish the same.
That's fine, as long as we get to the same purpose, right.
That's fantastic. And down the road, if we have to do a new bill, we will, and then there will be a tremendous process that has to be followed.
No, I understand, that's what I, you and I talked about earlier.
Yes.
Any other issues?
Yes.
I don't know if you were going down the line or-
Okay.
Dave, I was wondering if-
Yes, sir.
-how, House Bill 17-type bill has been introduced, this was the anti-home rule, home rule bill last year, which was being pushed in the House to try to take away a lot of municipal powers.
Have not seen that yet, not to say it won't come about, you know, they have a lot of bills that they keep as, as bills that they try to put things on a little bit later, you know, just have them there, so, yeah, but if anything surfaces.
And what about municipal elections? Last year, some of the legislators tried to interfere with municipal election dates for municipalities. Are they at it again?
Well, there are a couple of bills that do involve, let's see here.
Bless you.
Public records, voter registration, public financing, meeting, I saw a couple that might deal with elections.
They're posting the results.
Yeah, and what I will do is update this because I get them all the time, so I'll get ahead and put that in my report following this, but, you know, just to-
It'll pop up.
So you'll have to infer-
And then finally, there was a bill last year, I think it was in the House, that was dealing with financial disclosures from, you know, elected, local elected officials. Is that resurfacing?
We haven't, I know we worked on that tremendously, yeah. No, I haven't seen that yet. Anytime any of those pop up, those are red flags for me, based on historical, you know, data here, so I will certainly advise everyone and-
Appreciate that.
Anyone else, Kelly?
Yeah, I'm very passionate, as you know, David, about protecting our right to regulate short-term vacation rentals. For those of you who don't know, since 2011, the state of Florida has preempted our ability for any little cities that didn't have ordinances on the books. So our West Island had already been protected, so on the East Island, right now, we have the best ordinance that we could possibly have, but it just doesn't have a lot of teeth. So we would like to get our authority back in our home rule, and I'm sure most of my colleagues agree. Our home rule heroes here? Yes. Tito.
It's kind of funny because normally, as you know, every year we work on this, we always see a vacation rental bill pop up.
Right.
I have not seen anything, you know, major yet, but if I do, we'll take a look at that.
I think it was some wise man who said usually they go after it every other year.
Yes, yes.
So, but we need to stay on that. And our special counsel, Susan Travathan from Wyserota, she's kind of an expert on that, and I see her at different events and, you know, she's really following it, and we also have different seminars at best practices and other things. So that's one thing that I'm really keeping an eye on because we need the ability to regulate that. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. You've done a fantastic job staying on that issue, so.
David, last year, it wasn't last year, well, it was, no, it was this year. I guess before summer, I attended a meeting in North Bay Village that was sponsored by Senator Garcia, and it was narrowly focused on CIRAs.
On what?
Condominium CIRAs.
CERIs, I think.
Community, you know, whatever that stands for. Condominiums. And he spoke about a bill that he was, I think it was, he was partners with Pepe Diaz on.
Yes, but he was the House sponsor.
Right, which I think was a very, very good bill that forced condominium associations to be a lot more transparent.
Yes.
I think it raised the bar on financial reporting for condominium associations.
Major.
And actually recommended that they put some teeth into some of the statutes relating to their non-compliance with the, you know, with the regulations that are on the books.
As well as conflicts of interest.
You know, I think the residents of Bay Harbor Islands could definitely benefit from a bill like that passing, so I urge you-
Well, just so you know, it did pass last year.
It did pass.
Yeah, and the problem with that bill, though, because-
There's a lot of glitches.
There are a lot of glitches on the condominium committee of the real property, public trust law section, we had a meeting about that. And, you know, some of the penalties that, provisions of the statute may even arguably be unconstitutional because they talk about, for example, you know, fraudulent ballots, but when you go back to the criminal section that has the penalties, they don't list that as a violation. So the issues that we're talking about, and I don't know if the legislative bill is going to come up this year, if they really need to, it was a good start, but they really need to take a look at-
I think that might serve us because it is, there were some major glitches and even with, you know, folks running for office, they had a certain amount of time, but then what happens if nobody runs? What happens if, you know, if someone is, you know, steps down? Does that mean that they now can serve their two years again? There was so many-
Especially the term limits to be called.
Yeah, but like most bills, they just come up with something and they-
Follow, so the short, you know, the takeaway, the takeaway is that please follow any bills-
Absolutely. In fact, and I'll send you a copy of the one that passed so you see what the regulations-
Okay, good. The only other thing that I had was, really emanates from my serving on the Children's Trust Board. Just recently, the Value Adjustment Board has assessed or began collecting fee from the Children's Trust, which is Miami-Dade County Children's Services Council. And it just, coincidentally, the school board, which also has been paying the fee for about 35 years, sued the Value Adjustment Board for, you know, for actually assessing that fee against the school board, which statutorily, they had no right to assess and collect. And I've been speaking to legislators that anybody that will listen to me in efforts to get an amendment to the statute or some type of new statute that would also include Children's Services Council in that exemption from, you know, a fee being collected by the Value Adjustment Board because it cost the Children's Trust about 1.2 million dollars last year, and it's going to cost us again about 1.2 million dollars this year, and we hadn't paid it since inception. And, you know, everyone's throwing up their hands and saying, hey, you're lucky they didn't go back and collect, you know, this fee retroactively. But I don't, I don't think it was the intent of the statute just to exclude school boards. I think at the time that the statute was probably passed, it was intended for, well, it was intended for schools, obviously, but I don't think at that time there was even such a thing as Children's Services Councils. So- So I don't think it's a huge fix, but I think a small, you know, wordsmithing of that statute could save children's services councils across the state tens of millions of dollars.
Yeah, that's something that we certainly can look at right now and take a look at if there's any bill that, you know, an amendment like that could be, you know, put to. We'll work on language, we'll work with yourself and the manager.
Right, and I think actually the folks at the children's trust are putting together a letter.
Oh, okay.
A little narrative on exactly, you know, what, you know, what the problem is and how to fix it.
Then we can get the guidance to support them if, and when they come up with language that would do that.
All right, the only other comment I have is, bring us money.
Yes.
Bring us money, it's been a long time, David.
This is the year to do it. Has it really been a long time?
Yes.
Actually, David, I just have to interject that David has served us well in getting us appropriations. The problem is Governor Scott who line-up and vetoes them. So not just for Bay Harbor, but for colleges.
Well, I think I might have even been able to work some money out even outside of the process too, that we had, I think, at some point. So, I mean, we're always trying to make up where I didn't.
Right, but the governor was vetoing not only for municipalities, but colleges and universities.
That's correct.
All over, pockets all over the state.
It's election year, so I think he's going to veto a little bit less.
We'll see. We're hoping, yes. We'll see. Well, I'll be brief. I mean, and to save our time because we're running a little late, I'll give you my little cheat sheet later because, you know, I could probably spend the rest of the night talking about the ills of the legislature, so. But we've spoken several times between now and the previous session, so, and we'll continue that. And of course, I'll be up until last a few times, fighting to keep us back to square one, I guess. Unfortunately, for those of you that don't know, unfortunately, our legislature, sometimes we have to fight just to get back to where we were from the previous year. So, and that's unfortunate. So, that being said, thank you so much, Dave, for coming, and we will.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Thank you very much. I'll see you, I'll probably see you before the holidays, actually.
Well, just for the record, because I have to say this because I'm so darn proud of my daughter.
Yeah.
She was the cast, was one of the lead singers for the Radio City Christmas spectacular this year.
Congratulations.
That's right. Congratulations, Marilyn. Shout out to her.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care. Good night, Dave. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Hearing, no, nothing pulled.
I'll move it.
Got a second? Come up poll vote, please.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Sauber?
Four.
Councilmember Yoffe?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
All right, number five. Item five, consideration and approval on an ordinance on second reading, increasing the monthly base and flow charges for sewer service.
An ordinance of the town of Bay Harbor Islands amending section 20-9 of the town code, increasing the monthly base and flow charges for sewer service, providing for penalties, providing for servability, providing for qualification, providing for an effective date.
I'll move it.
Second.
A motion, second, any discussion? Hearing, no.
Just for the record, this is a pass through.
Yes, it is. Correct.
Passing on county.
And number six is a pass through also. All right, poll vote, please.
Councilmember Yoffe?
Four.
Councilmember Sauber?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
All right, number six. Item six, consideration and approval of an ordinance on second reading, increasing the monthly charge for water service.
An ordinance of the town of Bay Harbor Islands amending section 20-5 and 20-6 of the code of Bay Harbor Islands to increase the monthly charge for water service to $4.53 per 1,000 gallons, and to increase the minimum monthly service charges for each water meter to $21.08, providing for servability, providing for qualification, providing for an effective date.
A motion?
Move it.
A second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All right, poll vote.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Sauber?
Four.
Councilmember Yoffe?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Pass this unanimously.
Number seven.
Item seven, consideration and approval of an ordinance on first reading, amending section 23-11 of the town code to allow for additional building height in the B1 business district.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Bay Harbor Islands, Florida, amending the town zoning and planning code to amend section 2311C to allow for additional building height in the B1 business district, provided a developer participates in the town's public benefit program, establishing a public benefits program for additional building height, including specific public benefits desire about the town, providing for servability, providing for effective date.
A second. All right, we have a motion, a second. We have some public comments, so we'll do that one first. Leo Carrero, come on in.
I'm sorry, how you pronounce it? Carr and a narrow process, right?
All right.
Carr narrow, but it's kind of native Brazilian.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Leo Carrero at 1050 93rd Street. And before you guys vote on this, I just want to, as a citizen, I just letting you guys know that this is a go for me, is my opinion on it. What's a little, you know, we're not going 100 feet over, but I think that's scheduled in 10. I mean, I think it'll create more jobs. In the sense is, I work in construction, so, you know, the contract is bigger, and not even for me, as somebody who runs the job, but the guy who's doing the labor, it's more work that he has guaranteed to take extra pay to, you know, to their families. And then when this stuff is done, built, this extra floor that they do build, maybe it's an invitation for future businesses, and they'll be willing to pay a premium to oversee our beautiful town. So as a citizen, I don't have a problem with this, and I'll advise you guys to vote for it, so. Thank you so much, great time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Francis Newhut?
Eddie Southon Parks, right.
All right, thanks.
This is number seven, right?
Number seven.
Number seven, yes.
Okay, this is about putting, this is the business district with that new development on the cane concourse, correct?
Correct.
Okay, first of all, I.
It's not for that specific, it's for the entire business. It's not for any specific.
It's for your property as well.
But what's happening now is, we do have, okay, the business district is 65 feet. The gateways on East Bay Harbor Drive, which I mentioned before, you gave to the church, you upzone that so that they can sell their property for 20 million and, or 12 million. The property of Mr. Talber was 65 feet, that's commercial. You upzone that to 75 feet. Now, I'm in the business district, and I put in a site plan for the business district because it was 65 feet, and everyone told me, well, eventually it would be 75 feet. So there is some kind of going on here because this property, if you put unity of title to it, you have one gateway there that's on the residential affecting all the houses on the other side of the water there. And we already went through this where they did not on the comprehensive plan, and it's increasing intensity on that particular space there. I know we don't follow the comprehensive plan anymore, but yes, it will be very, first of all, they're putting another floor. We have no more parking, hello. There's no more parking. They have to put everything, if they add a floor, they have to put it on top or in the property itself. So now, you've got 75 feet, you've got it on gateway, which you promised us a waterfront, and now we have the problems of everything, even usages, these usages that you are putting in. You've mentioned affordable housing or workforce housing, which has been on the news every day, people going to jail, hello. And now you're going to put it in our town while we're selling million-dollar condos. I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it at all. We're bringing down this town.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a request, Jordan. Perhaps you want to have Mr. Miller go over this, and we were handed an addendum late and specifically mentioned the rooftop structures in 2312, so maybe.
We can have Mr. Miller, after we finish public comment, I think it would be appropriate for him to.
Then you can address all of the comments.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be fine.
At some point.
Sure, sure. I'm sorry.
Who would that be?
Yeah. Harry, oh my God.
Harry, I didn't recognize you.
Should have been a doctor.
Harry Bruder, 1281 94th Street. As you know, I've been talking about, I've been pro-development for 23 years, and I've never swayed from pro-development. Over the past 23 years, I've been not always right and on certain issues with development, with the height going to 15 stories, and I commend you guys for fighting pretty tough with that one. And at this point, we have probably the nicest town in the state of Florida, I mean, the way we, just it shows you, to put the development from the, from the way that we recovered from the hurricane, it's just a trickle-down effect that new development's always going to be the best for the town. And, you know, as far as this is concerned with, you know, working with the developers, I don't know, I'm in business a long time, I think I'm pretty successful, and there's no guarantee a developer's going to, going to make money, you know, and he's going to be successful. We need to work with these developers, and, you know, the cane concourse has been a sleepy thing, sleepy place for, since the day I walked in here, probably 30 years before that. And I think it's a time, because with the new construction and the socioeconomic situation we have today, we could wake up this cane concourse. And in another way, it trickles down also, the success of every business and every building and every office building and every retail building and everything that happens that succeeds, you know, I don't like to say it like this, but it does bring more money for the town because it raises the taxes and the properties go up. It's just simple math, you know, simple, simple business. And, you know, when people succeed, we succeed. And that's where we have to, that's the way we have to look at it. There's no other way to look at it. If he succeeds, we succeed, everybody succeeds, and we all become winners from people succeeding. And I don't have a problem with seeing nicer restaurants, nicer retail. Can I get another few seconds?
A few seconds.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I believe that if some, if one property succeeds, that means everybody else around it, like you see La Solis, and one guy, you know, like my wife, you know, she goes into the restaurant, then she goes into 12 stores, you know, she goes.
That's a good place to end it.
And that's how it works, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bruder.
Anyways.
We're going to get, I'm going to get into trouble.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Harry. You're going to get it tonight. All right, Mike, come on up, please. For those of you that don't know, we received, Eric, all right, for those of you that don't know, we received, I guess, an amended version of the first reading, so, Mike, if you and probably, I guess, Frank could briefly explain the changes.
Sure. Do you want a little background on this before we?
I mean, we already, I mean, we all know what's.
Just last month, you, we had a discussion on a request from a newer property owner in our community to ask you to consider raising the height of buildings in the B1 commercial area. The reasoning was primarily that to facilitate a Class A kind of building, you need a little bit taller floors for the office space, and for a retail component generally, you want at least 14 feet on your ground floor for the store operations and the, you know, the displays and so forth. When you do the math equations, they felt that they, a little bit taller height would allow them to achieve what they wanted to achieve, which is one more story to the complex. We, you know, about 15 years ago now, some years are flying by, we, the community had a series of visioning sessions and design charrettes. There's a couple consultants came in, there was consensus, we rewrote the code about 10 or 11 years ago now in the B1 district. And one of the consultants said 65 feet, one said 75 feet, the council at that time decided 65 feet. So now we have the charter at 75 feet, so that's, that's the cap, if you will, unless you do the charter amendment referendum. We, at your request, there was a group of the staff members that worked on this ordinance, Mr. Simone and myself and Marlene primarily were the thinkers on this, and we tried to, based on what we see in other communities where, rather than just simply changing the height from 65 feet to 75 feet, that there would be a public benefit program put in place, very similar to Sunny Isles Beach, Miami, 21 ordinances. If you go, if you, if a developer is asking to go taller, there's a quit-pro-co, if you will, there's a trade-off in FAR or building height or density type of things in exchange. The community of Sunny Isles Beach is a good example. They, with all the redevelopment of all the high-rises, they got multiple beach access, they get money for parks development, even if your setback is decreased, they get some money. So there's, these are established programs, and they're geared towards the desires of each community. We put together an initial list in the ordinance, it can be amended. We tried to identify things that we saw in some of the other ordinances and things that are important to you as a community. This could be changed. We tried to come up with at least minimum qualifiers of things, rather than saying, "I'll give you one more parking space," or something like that. And again, these are things that can be changed. So there are specific items, affordable housing, dedication of public parks and open space, undergrounding, utility lines, green building standards, excess parking, things that are in our capital improvement budget. And then there's kind of a catch-all, if you will, of things we, that would allow you some flexibility. And our intention for you is to give you a tool that's flexible based on each situation. One project may, you know, want something, some of these things on this one, on this side, some on, and the balance may change. So we're trying to give you a tool, if you want to pursue this, with some criteria, but also some flexibility.
Mike, can you just clear up one thing?
Yeah.
There was a comment made by Mrs. Newhut about that waterfront lot that happens to be owned by the folks that own the four lots on cane concourse. Is that waterfront lot considered B1 business district?
No, in fact.
So this legislation has nothing to do with that, right?
It has residential land use, it is zone gateway.
Right.
But the gateway says for that lot, you refer to the residential.
Right, it's not applicable to this.
Exactly. Okay, just thank you.
Good for our edification, yeah, for our own edification.
And we do follow the comprehensive plan, by the way.
Yeah, of course. Personally, I mentioned to Frank today and also mentioned to Michael, you know, I don't like the specifics because I don't think it's applicable for every single project, because again, you're talking about the entire business district. What may be applicable for one specific project may not be very good to our public benefit for a different project. And, you know, I'd like to see a more generic phrasing of the verbiage for what, you know, in the bullet points, because, for example, you look at, you know, the green buildings, I like the idea that you put one or more, but I think it needs to be more of where the council needs to vote on the issue case by case. You know, for example, yeah.
The key word here is "may."
No, I know that, I know, but.
Not "will be," so that gives us the ability to do exactly what you're talking about.
It does, but I don't want to lead people on. Like, for example, you look at the workforce housing, which I don't particularly favor for this, for this district, but, you know, if you're looking at a 25% minimum, that may be great if, for example, you had 40 units and you're giving 10 out of the 40 are going to be, you're going to do this, you know, project against could be workforce. But if you had four units and you gave away one, you kind of sneaked your way into it. And again, I don't want to, you're 100% right, what Josh said, we "may," but I think it should be, again, more generic. So if we're going to pass it, I want to put on the record that it needs to be where[1729.28] that it needs to be where the council is going to be looking at it case by case, that we don't wanna give the, the inference that we're, that if you did X, you're necessarily gonna get it, because that may not be the case.
I think that's understood in the ordinance, and also I think you could add, you know, for one or more of the following public benefits without limitation, I mean, there may be other benefits, you know, public benefit, maybe other items that could benefit the public and benefit our town that are not included in the list, so I would wanna just clarify that where you're not limited to.
Right.
And at least the last ones is any other contribution.
Any, right, says any other contribution.
Right, exactly, and, and let me say, Jordan, one of the things, I, I see where you're going, but at the same time, I think this covers it, because if you look at A within eight A.
Right.
It talks about, it says, the public, the town council approves the request.
Correct.
Add public meeting, and, and so it gives us the ability, what you're talking about before any of this other stuff happens.
I just wanna make sure, 'cause, you know, I, I just don't wanna be in a position where we're, we're.
When we're stuck.
Yeah, where we're giving ourselves something, 'cause this is something that, if we're gonna give the extra ten feet, we wanna make sure that, that.
No, this gives us the vote, this gives us the vote.
That's what I want, exactly, okay. Any other comments?
There's no obligation, is there?
No, no, no.
In this ordinance, I mean, somebody may come in and say, I'll give you A, B, and C, and the council says.
We say, no, thank you.
No, thank you.
We can say no, correct?
That's why we use the word "may."
Right, even if it's something that they have in their mind, they fulfilled by doing one of these things, we at any time can say no.
We can say no.
We can say no, even if they pick one of these and say, okay.
Kinda like the gateway in a way, so, okay, I just wanna make sure, all right. Any other comments on number seven?
I think there was, wasn't there a question on the changes?
Michael, we can't hear you, or I'm not sure the people behind you can hear you.
I think there was a question, a question on the.
I think it's highlighted, just what, what the changes are.
There was just.
It says a couple more words.
There was a request by the attorney representing the new property owner that wanted to clarify that if you lift it up, you can still do the elevator shaft on top and things that we allow regularly, so that was a clarification.
It's in the general ordinance, anyway.
Right, of course. All right, hearing no other comments, um, can we have a poll vote, please?
I just wanna say one thing.
Oh.
Just to clarify, we have a lot of people in the audience, we have a charter that caps our height for the whole town, or the East Island essentially at seventy-five feet, and by code, which, you know, the charter can only be changed by a vote of the people, and the code we can change, so we could just change this code for nothing, but we have this, um, this idea that came from the development community that says, well, change it, and here we're gonna give you something for it, and this allows us to do that. So I, I think it's actually very good, we've talked about it all the time, it never had a mechanism, so I think it's a good idea. Thank you, development community.
All right, Paul vote. Excuse me.
Councilmember Yaffe?
Four.
Councilmember Sauber?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Vice member Bruder?
Four.
Mayor Leonard? Four, yeah. All right, number eight. Item A, consideration approval of an ordinance of first reading, amending chapter four of the town code to prohibit animal, am, animal feeding on public right-of-ways.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Bay Harbor Islands, Florida, amending chapter four of the town's adopted code of ordinances entitled Animal Control by Article 418 entitled prohibiting the feeding of stray or ownerless cats on public property, providing for several, providing codification and providing effective date.
All right, can I have a motion a second for discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we delay the vote on this in lieu of getting a group together to put a comprehensive TNR plan.
Well, we.
Oh, what, oh, what plan, Kelly?
Well, I would, I, yes, I, I move to defer it, I would like you, we have a lot of people in the audience who are considered subject matter experts, and I would like you to give us until January to put together a plan with staff, but since they're here, you know, they can share some ideas with you.
I, I agree, I think before we vote on this, I would like to get a better, I mean, I, yeah, I, sorry, I'm sorry, I, I, I agree with Kelly, I would like to see staff and maybe some of the experts come up with a plan, just saying, you know, feed the cat, don't feed the cat, that's.
I'm just wondering why we didn't defer it an hour?
Yeah, I know.
Don't wanna talk about it if it's gonna be deferred.
Yeah, if it's gonna be deferred.
I don't wanna talk about it.
If it's gonna be deferred, next time.
I want the group to meet, I agree with Kelly, the group should meet, they should have the experts, they should meet with, um.
They should meet with the manager.
The manager, come up with a plan, not just, this is what we wanna do, but a comprehensive plan, I agree with Kelly, and then come back and actually have a vote on something.
Let me just make a few points then, in lieu, and, uh, you know, we've all spoken.
No, well, wait, I think.
If we're gonna defer it, on to the next item.
Is this a discussion on the.
Hold on, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, hold on, if a council member wants to defer it and the council so chooses, it gets deferred, that's the process, it's either gonna be deferred or it's not gonna be.
But we have a motion and a second to defer, and now we're gonna discuss that motion, is that?
We're gonna discuss.
Just one, just a brief couple of points, or no?
You, you wanna, you wanna defer it, so let's vote to defer it and, and we'll.
I just, I just feel bad for everybody who waited here because this is.
He would've mentioned, excuse me.
But let me, I, I just.
I'll explain.
There's a motion and a second.
Yeah, but you can discuss on the.
But here's the thing, I mean, it's a, this is a very limited. Should've been an hour ago. Ordinance, you know, that, nobody's saying trap cats, capture them, do anything to the cats other than limiting where you could feed them, I'm, I'm just saying, that's what the ordinance is, so it's very discreet and very limited, I mean, what, like, what, what will the group, you know, get together to discuss, and, you know, it simply says you can't feed a cat on public property, you could feed a cat in front, on your property, in front of your property, but not in a town parking lot, for example, so I'm not sure what.
Well, I just, I really wanted to take a minute, I could've done it already, just to make two or three points to tell you where we're going, because maybe in the next two months, you'd like to do a little research on your own. You know, the, the manager provided us with, uh, an article from PETA that is entitled Feral Cats Trapping Is The Kindest Solution, okay? PETA is great, big organization, deals with lots of animals, we have some local organizations that deal specifically with feral cats, for example, the Cat Network, uh, we have many volunteers here who are trained by Miami-Dade County, we have, uh, some volunteers who have worked for various cities.
Kelly, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I, we can't, we, we have an item, we have a protocol of doing this.
The fact that the people here are waiting to speak about it, and we either speak about it or we don't, but if they're, if you're gonna speak about it, then.
Chief, can you get the, hold on, chief, can you get the vice mayor to come in, 'cause we need to vote on this, so, just tell, come on in, 'cause, 'cause, yeah, but I need to, we're gonna vote on whether or not we're gonna defer it or not, so, you know, all those in favor, in favor of deferring it, say aye.
Maybe a little bit better.
All right, she's in favor, you're in favor, anyone against? No one, no one's against, so the ayes have it, I guess, is it? I mean, do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So we're gonna defer it, all right, so we'll defer it till, till January.
But I think if you're going to defer, it's already, well, it's not, if we're going to, it's already been deferred, but, but, somebody needs to schedule a meeting and coordinate a meeting then, because a lot of people came out here this evening who wanted to speak, and just to say we're gonna talk about it again.
No.
In January without doing anything between now and January is counterproductive, so I'm not sure who's gonna be in charge of that, Kelly.
Okay, I will take the lead on getting some of these volunteers to have a meeting with the staff to put together basically a comprehensive TNR program.
That's fine, in the future, please, if you wanted to defer it in the beginning.
Well, I, I thought I might've been contacted before this, when I saw this agenda item on Wednesday, you know, I thought it was very drastic, and, uh, you know, I talked to Ron a little bit about it and possibly.
No, I meant the beginning of the meeting.
I mean, we have an item on the agenda, and that way everybody knows, so they're not, you know, I mean, I mean, and by the way, just for the record, you know, for everyone's edification, I mean, I contacted, you know, did my research before, I was prepared to, to discuss it, including calling our, and by the way, I will mention, just for, you know, this, um, I spoke to our county commissioner, January fourteenth is going to be a TNR day for Miami-Dade County in Bay Harbor Islands, so we are gonna have an actual citywide for Bay Harbor Islands on January fourteenth, Sally Hayman's gonna sponsor it with the Animal Services Department, so, but Ron, excuse me, Ron, can you just make sure that we get all their information, I'm sure we can use the public record, and we'll invite anyone that wants to come and speak to you in regards to this, okay?
Mister Mayor, I just have one quick question.
I.
TNR is for actually, um, make them, you know, fixing them so they can.
Yeah, I know.
So we are here saying about not giving them, starting them.
Unfortunately, I, I understand, but the council, you know, it was proposed and it was approved to defer the item, so, so they can.
They can leave all their information at the back. Listen, this is gonna drag the meeting a little bit, but I think it's, it's reasonable, Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
A lot of these people did not put their, their names in for Good and Welfare because they thought they were gonna be speaking about an actual item, I think we should reopen Good and Welfare if they want to speak about it, because it is, I, I feel bad for anybody who's.
I do, too.
Okay.
If someone wants to speak about it.
I believe the vice mayor is collecting names, phone numbers.
Hold on, guys, 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 you know, hold on.
Okay, what about this? What if I withdraw the motion to defer and we hear?
It's already been approved.
If you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna move it and, and second it, you can add with a super majority, you can.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all right, well.
Right.
All right.
Can we reopen Good and Welfare before we want to?
You can, if we.
I'm, I'm gonna move that we reopen Good and Welfare for anybody who wants to speak, since it's no longer on the agenda, and you, they can actually speak and have your three minutes up here and speak if anything you wanna talk about.
My second.
All right, a motion, second.
Actually, let's just make it two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay, two minutes is fine, that's fine.
All right.
So ladies and gentlemen, let me explain.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
So ladies and gentlemen, because we have deferred the motion until, until, uh, January, and you will all, as you can see, we're asking you to please put your name, phone number, and email, we are allowing all of you, as if it was Good and Welfare, two minutes to discuss whatever you'd like to discuss at the moment regarding.
Regarding number eight.
Number eight, and then you will be contacted for a meeting to have a fuller discussion about what we should do, so that it can come back to the council at that time, a more comprehensive.
And the manager's gonna be contacting you.
Correct.
And the manager will have a meeting with all of the interested parties, not the council, but the manager, so that way, um, because, because of sunshine, no one individual, you know, you can't have two or more individual council members.
You can have one.
You can have one, and then one, and then one, and then one, but you can't all.
But I'm sure all of us would wanna be part of it, so if the manager could do that, he can bring it back to the council as far as recommendations.
Well, it's kind of like the business district sign ordinance, so I would like to attend this meeting.
That's fine.
That's fine.
All right.
Mister Mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that you ought to make a provision, if Josh is okay with it, that the testimony not be cumulative, so that if, if more than one person agrees with the other, that one person speak instead of saying the same thing over and over again.
Okay, that's fine.
Kathleen Kennedy.
All right, Kathleen.
Thank you. Kathleen Kennedy, ninety-one eighty, West Bay Harbor Drive, the couple that brought this to somebody's attention, are they here in the room tonight?
Please, I, I don't think it's appropriate, so.
Okay, that's fine, 'cause it was one individual, I mean, I was here, 'cause I spoke to them when they were here complaining about cats. You know what, uh, this is a shame, because you broke down, you, I see Mr. Caston, the developers broke down all these buildings, and poor owners had to walk away from their animals, cats, they couldn't take them to where they were going, and what did we get? We had cats roaming the streets, then we got rats, and I remember people coming up here in front of all of you and saying, we have rats, and guess who took care of the rat problem? The cats. So you know what, really? This is, you know, I'd be trying to get a plaque for a friend of mine, and cats are getting more attention than those Marano, and this is disgusting that you guys had the time to talk about friggin' cats, beautiful animals, they're taking care of this island, they're running around this house right now, I see the traps all around at this town hall, okay? And I, somebody, by the way, Marlene, I forgot to give you credit for the Facebook, thank you, but somebody told me there's a cat in, in the house, running around catching all the rats. Come on, guys, get real, I know, Kelly, you love rats, uh, excuse me, sorry, I know you love cats, Kelly, and I thank you for that, I'm sorry, and I do, too, I love animals, period. I know who's the problem here on this council, for the cats. Get a life, love animals, and let's take care of these rats.
All right, excuse me, all right, just, all right, for those of you that don't know our protocol, please, no clapping, I think it's, we need, we have an agenda, yeah, you can, you can do that, just like the county, all right, so we're gonna go down.
Heidi Lee.
Heidi?
Heidi.
All right, come on, all right.
Sorry about that, Kelly.
I'll be quick, my name's Heidi Lee, I live at ten sixty-five Ninety-seventh Street, and I basically agree with everything the lady before me said. I'm an animal lover, leave the cats alone, they're not hurting anybody, and trust me, just in the last two, last six months, two cats here in the parking lot, and one of the workers who worked downstairs got rid of them for me, because after the cats caught them, so thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Eckert?
All right, please, Mrs. Kennedy.
What did you say?
Please, no clapping.
Oh, I get you, I'm sorry, I'm having an ear problem.
Or down.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Eckert, I live at one oh three five oh, West Bay Harbor Drive, and I basically concur with everything that was said, but I also wanna say that these are living, breathing animals, beings, I mean, they, they will starve if they are not fed, they will rummage in our garbage, they will, it will be a worse problem if, you know, they're not kept fed, and, and they are, they were dumped here by people, and it's not their fault, I mean, and personally, I too love animals, and I feel so sad for them, some of these cats just, it's very sad, I mean, I don't know what else to say, but I hope that you will hear us out and change your votes.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Lisa Portman.
Thank you so much, council member, mayor, I know this is redundant, um, I hate public speaking, by the way, anyway, I.
Start with your name and your address.
I'm sorry, thank you, Lisa Portman, one zero three five zero, West Bay Harbor Drive. I believe we don't wanna be a community to be an animal haters, I think that we as a community can find a solution to really do the right thing, which would be TNR, and I'm looking forward to working with the town manager and hopefully coming up with a solution that works for everybody, but I think signing an ordinance saying, do not feed the cats, is really not gonna have a solution, I think it's gonna make it worse, so I think that's the, I don't wanna live in a community that believes in that, and I know a lot of other cities and counties have put TNR in place and it's worked very well for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Joe, Joe.
Is that Job?
Javelin. You know, I'm just gonna defer because.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Leah, Leah Ray.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Leah Ray, I live on ninety-eight eighty, West Bay Harbor Drive, I am an animal lover, but I prefer cats over rats, I just have notes, 'cause I'm not a good public speaker. So I recently met a ninety, a seventy-four-year-old cat lady that opened my eyes to her world, she knew all the cats in the neighborhood and had names for each of them, she recently had to move out of the building on the corner of ninety-eight hundred, Bay Harbor Drive, where she had lived for over twenty years because her building was sold. She had been taking care of a family of three cats for over nineteen years, I guess it was a generational thing, but she actually had been feeding them, giving them flea medicines, getting them fixed, they were the healthiest cats I've seen in a long time, I have two cats, but sure hers were very healthy, too, it's, not, I don't know as much as mine, but anyway, the point is, um, I can't imagine this woman's world if her cat, if these cats were taken from her, she had been displaced from where she lived, and she has to walk down the road to feed them, and, yeah, obviously they were part of her family, and, um, I just feel that she's an elderly woman and this gives her something to do, and cats, actually, as I'm sure everyone knows, especially living on islands, they take care of rat problems. If you were to look up a National Geographic, um, article recently, September two thousand seventeen, they have homeless cats are recruited to fight rising tides of rats in DC, in Vancouver, in New York, um, there's another, another article, I'm sorry, I didn't print them out, um, a woman, a doctor in Vancouver, said that there are rats now with MRSA strains, the same as the human MRSA strains, because of the rats in the area, and they are now recruiting cats to take care of them, and, not that I'm praying that this happens to us, but I want you to know, in Bay Har, uh, North Bay Village, North Bay Island, when they took out all the feral cats, they had an infestation of rats, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much, and you did a great job, public speaking.
Who do we have next?
Mayor Lindas Silver.
Mayor Silver.
We live on the water, when you live on the water, you have water rats, but we settled this a long time ago, when I was mayor, we had a group that came here, and they were interested in doing something about the cats, and we had Cat Network come, they take the cats, and they neuter them, and they bring them back, and it's a wonderful community, so we already decided that, that we were gonna let the cats live happily and have Cat Network come and help the cats to be healthy cats, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Caesar Suarez.
Caesar.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, town council members, my name is Caesar Suarez, and I reside at ninety-seven forty-five Bay Harbor Terrace, apartment number six. First of all, I wanna, I wanna briefly say that I believe number eight should not be ratified because it is ineffective, lacks any real strategy, and instead advocates cruel and abusive treatment of stray cats. According to the Humane Society. According to the Humane Society, the general logic behind feeding bans is that with no feeding, the stray cats would generally go away, which is generally not the case. Instead, what it does cause is the cats to become desperate, because they can survive in many instances, weeks without food. And what generally occurs is that it makes the cats go straight closer to businesses, homes, and dumpsters, which basically increases the propensity for disease transmission from cats to human beings. So I also want to quickly point out that instead, the town council should adopt, should not adopt item number eight, and instead consider legislating TNR, which is trap, neuter, and return. The basic strategy behind TNR is to trap cats, have them spayed or neutered, get them vaccinated against rabies, identifying them with an inner ear tip, and returning them to their original territories. The cruelty law in Dade County is defined as an act or conditions which result in inhumane treatment of an animal. Chapter five, section 54 of Miami-Dade County Code defines cruelty to animals as to deprive an animal by neglect or refusal of any of the following forms of necessary sustenance, food and water. So basically, stray cats are living, breathing creations of God who have the same rights as humans to not suffer. Ratifying this ordinance will only create widespread cruelty and suffering through starvation of stray cats, and as such, number eight should not be ratified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment?
Suli Caramelo. Caramelo, thank you.
Council members, mayor, Suli Caramelo, 1165 98th Street. I am a feeder by South Beach, Town of Surfside, Sunny Isles, and North Bay Village. We are the only municipality who do not have a TNR program. This is not culture. We destroy several buildings. Most people move out of those buildings, leaving those cats behind. We need to take care of them, because we are at fault, because we put those buildings in place. I like the progress, but I also don't like everything that is going on. I think we should do a TNR program. It's not like we have millions of cats, like Miami Beach does. We have a handful. Why so much to do about nothing? You know, let's TNR and get that under control, and stop bitching and moaning about the cats. You know, it's half a dozen cats, it's not like two million. Please reconsider section eight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hearing no other, we'll close public comment again.
Yeah, Jordan.
Yes, please.
You know, since we've already heard the opinion of several citizens here, can I suggest that we do not defer this and just let this die now, and then later, and then later on come back with a renewed TNR plan? Could I have a consensus on that? Because we've already invested time into this.
I second that. I second that idea.
Anyone object?
Nope.
Hearing none. There you go.
So come on, come with the...
Now, hold on one second. Now, hold on, hold on, hold on, guys. All right, now, excuse me, Ron.
Have the plan.
Excuse me.
Re- reduce.
So let's re- 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 re-
So, Ron, you're gonna meet with these individuals, and we'll come back in January.
Just with an update.
And then, and then also keep in mind, one of the things I'd like to do is also, in the, since we don't have a meeting in December, if we can advertise in the newsletter, if you can go with Commissioner Hayman's office and advertise the fact that we are going to have on January 14th, that the, through the commissioner's office, that the Animal Services Department, and I believe also the Cat Network, is also gonna be involved in that as well, to, to have a TNR, you know, for, for those cats that are in Bay Harbor Islands, and I believe also Surfside and Bow Harbor's in that, too. I think she's trying to get the tri municipal area, too. One of the things that I will mention, because I did do a little bit of homework, you know, most people may not know that are not cat lovers, that Miami-Dade County provides, you know, spade or neutering and vaccine shots for free. And a lot of people that, that are maybe watching this on TV, or who don't know, it's, it's a free service. You know, you can even actually get a trap from the county for a deposit, and trap the animal, and bring it to the county, and they'll do it at no charge to you. And when you think about how many cats are in this community, it's not being utilized. In 2016, there were sixty cats that are not from an individual home, meaning they were on the streets in this zip code, and out of the sixty cats in 2016, only five came from Bay Harbor. And in 2017, out of the thirteen cats, also in this zip code, only four from Bay Harbor. So in almost two years, we're talking about nine out of seventy-three. And what that says to me is that it's, it's great to talk about feeding, but if we're not talking about spade and neutering and vaccinating, you're really not talking about caring about animals. I grew up with cats, and feeding them's the easy part. It's taking care of them. So, Mr. Manager, I would just...
Can I just ask approval?
No, no, we, we had the comment, we're gonna say, Mr. Manager, if we could just make sure that we get all of their, their input, and we can get that on the agenda, okay? All right, we're gonna move on to number nine.
Item nine, consideration and approval of an ordinance on first reading, amending section eighteen dash twenty-two of the town code to require property owners to underground the service lines. That's the line from the pole to the house.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Bay Harbor Islands, Florida, amending section eighteen twenty-two, entitled new construction rehabilitated structures...
Hold on, hold on, excuse me, excuse me. Members of the public, please, we still have the rest of the meeting to go through, so if you want to speak, feel free to go outside, but if you could just give us the opportunity to finish our agenda, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Adam Clerk.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Bay Harbor Islands, Florida, amending section eighteen twenty-two, entitled new construction rehabilitated structures to require property owners to underground the service line or lateral from the building to the utility poles or underground facilities, providing for stability, providing for certification, and providing effective date.
I'll move it.
Second.
Our motion, a second, any discussion? We have public comment. Francis Newhat again.
Mayor, just so, before France speaks...
Yeah, please.
Just so you understand that it's been long, long the town policy, that when new construction or work is being done, that the building department requires undergrounding from the rear of the house or rear of the property into the building.
Right.
This really was, just to clarify it, to make sure that there's no misunderstanding of what, what needs to happen, and that's why this...
Look, I just, before, because I talked to you about this, and to deal about this in the past, I mean, I'm glad this is on the agenda, and that you're codifying this. I think that the idea of having policies, which are not ordinances...
We're losing the form, if you want.
...results in confusion, and, and sometimes unexpected surprises when, you know, homeowners or property owners are, are planning renovations and so forth. So the fact that it's a written ordinance as opposed to a policy, which sometimes is ambiguous, I think is important.
Absolutely. All right, Mrs. Newhat.
Should I go outside? There are more people out there.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. For free.
First of all, what's nice about utility facilities, you can see them. And you can see this substandard work that FPNL is doing. And I've been complaining for a hundred years, because we have behind our buildings the old poles, they're wobbly, whatever, they're rusted, they're this, they're that. I mean, it's so easy to underground them, and this, what I'm trying to say is, this ordinance is nothing new. It's in our code already. And, but I want to just say that in, what we don't accent is the high quality of life, and that's section eleven dash eight point one, and that's after eleven eight, which is services, and they talk about public facilities such as this. And again, it's in our code, they're to underground from the house. Excuse me, can I wait till they're done?
Chief?
Door closed.
Chief, could you just ask them to...
Thanks.
Okay. It would have been very easy for our town, especially with TDR money, to underground on the East Island since you ripped up everything. We have now, and this happened in other towns, and if you look at these concrete poles now, you have that, all this stuff on it that's gonna kill us. You could see that by Talbro's building. These should be undergrounded. There are towns have complained about the radiate, whatever that stuff is that they get cancer from, that's in our town. My son just bought a house. The telephone poles in the back of his house are almost in a swimming pool. So they're so, like I said, we, this ordinance is on the books. We have to concentrate on the quality, the quality here, and high quality of life with these facilities. And also, they talk about with these facilities, channel eighty-eight, and the service. Well, I got news for you, there's no sound again. So I don't know what's going on with this town, but we're not getting the service, we're not getting the quality of life here. This is a beautiful town.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Newhat.
And we don't need affordable housing, John.
Thank you. All right, hearing no other comments, we have a motion, a second. Poll vote. Four.
Councilmember Silver.
Four.
Councilmember Reed.
Which number?
Nine.
Nine.
Undergrounding, first reading.
Four. Councilmember Fuller's nine chambers. Vice Mayor Brewer?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Passes.
Number ten.
Consideration and approval of an ordinance on first reading, amending chapter, amending chapter sixteen of the town code to permit payroll deductions for the payment of purchases of credited service of past military service or police service.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Bay Harbor Islands, Florida, amending chapter sixteen, the town of Bay Harbor Islands employees retirement system of the town of Bay Harbor Islands Code of Ordinances to permit payroll deductions for the payment of purchases of credit service for past military and or police service, providing for stability, providing for certification, providing for an effective date.
I'll move it.
Yeah, I'll second it. Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Poll vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Silver?
Four.
Councilmember Yaffi?
Four.
Vice Mayor Brewer?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four. Number eleven, please.
Consideration and approval of an award contract, BHI 186, for pressure cleaning and sanding of brick pavers in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars in favor of Cartman Commercial Services.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Motion, a second, any discussion?
I do. The restaurants that use the, the...
Pressing.
No, the, the sitting areas, yeah, the sitting, they pay a certain amount into the town for the cleaning of the...
Do they pay for, do they pay for the cleaning, or they pay money?
Do they pay money?
No, they don't, only if code goes and inspects and sees that is an inordinate amount of dirt, or we have to come back and service it, then we would require that, or ask them to take care, you know, come back on their own and clean.
All right, I would ask...
It's their choice, right, to pay or to do it themselves, they could have someone do it.
I would ask if you could just make sure that the new company look at some of the streets, because I did not like how the old company was, and there's in fact some areas already where you can see the grass already growing between the pavers, so I hope they take, the new company takes care of that appropriately.
Okay, well, you got it.
Please. All right, poll vote, please.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Silver?
Four.
Councilmember Yaffi?
Four.
Vice Mayor Brewer?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four. Tell us what you really think.
Number twelve. Item twelve, consideration and approval of an award contract, BHI 187, for custodial services for public buildings in the amount of sixty-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars, in favor of professional building services.
All right, motion, please. Any motion? Last chance. Number twelve.
Just to clean town hall and clean all our public buildings.
We're about to lose it, so...
Well, I'm, I'm moving for discussion.
Moving for discussion.
I mean, the question is, what are we currently doing? Do we have a janitorial service, or now that we have more public facilities, we're looking to...
No, this, this would include our, we don't, we have to bid every once in a while, just to make sure we're getting our...
Was there a second?
We currently have...
There is no second.
I just had a question. All right, well, if I can just...
I'll second it for discussion.
There's a second, okay, now, go ahead.
Our current contract is expired, so we went out to bid again. The contractor that we currently had, that was currently doing it, they weren't doing a great job, you asked the police department, weren't really satisfied with them. We went out to bid, these are the way the bids came back. We don't have an on-staff janitor, cleaning company, so kinda need a cleaning company.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you, it's, first of all, I'm glad it's not the same company, because they really left a lot to die.
A lot of schmutz.
And I'm OCT, so schmutzy was schmutz. The bathrooms were awful. But you took it out to bid, and this, you, you, you looked, you called other comp, you know, other...
This, these are, we had...
I know.
This is advertised publicly. It was advertised publicly.
No, I know, but I'm saying, you, you're, they're satisfied customers.
Yes, no, the, the company, the, the company that we're recommending, we're very satisfied, we would be satisfied.
How much were we... Okay.
No, see, the problem happened with the, the other company, they underbid the last time, so when they started the work, they're like, oh, I don't know if I can do this like this, and so from the very beginning, we didn't have...
So who do we have right now? The old company?
No, currently doing this, until this contract, that hopefully gets awarded, we had the com, the old company.
What, well, just for the manager's justification, I, you know, or everyone else for that matter, I mentioned to the manager today, for item eleven and twelve, that I think it's, it's prudent that you mention what's done previously, because, you know, Councilmember Yaffi, you know, alluded to something that was the same thing I, I mentioned today during the day when I called the manager about this item, that eleven and twelve, you would never know what we currently do, you wouldn't know that the previous company was a different company, you couldn't know from reading this item, from eleven, the same thing. So I, I didn't like the company that, that was currently working on, on the pressure cleaning, the, the pavers, so I, I wouldn't have known that from looking at the agenda items. So please, if staff could just put in a little bit of history, it helps us go a long way.
Okay.
Especially when you have a time limitation.
Agreed.
And JC, let me ask you also, you're, you're comfortable with the, like, as far as security with this company?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we're comfortable there. Everybody's gonna, you know, background checks.
Standard, I just want to make sure, because we're letting them in places they really normally wouldn't be entering.
The, the, I believe the police department's doing cartwheels.
Right, that's, but I want to make sure. Exactly. All right, so we have a motion, a second, hearing any discussion? All right, poll vote, please.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Silver?
Four.
Councilmember Yaffi?
Four.
Vice Mayor Brewer?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four. Number fourteen, please.
Item fourteen, consideration and approval of an award of contract to proof, LLC in the amount of thirty-eight thousand to purchase and separate the police department network hardware from the town hardware. We spoke about this, it's a requirement to do this.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I have one question. I noticed that it's a, I think it's a refurbished server, the, the computer, is that, is that something you guys are okay with? I'm sure it's something that, I remember looking at this somewhere. it's something that, I remember looking at this somewhere. It's refurbished?
Yeah, it is.
If it is, then I would ask, well, Roberto's not here, but he's the one that would sign off on it.
I mean, it comes with a warrant, a one-year warranty, but I'm just saying, you're gonna spend this kind of money, you really wanna refurbished, you know, server?
I, I sent a picture of this to my IT guy.
Oh, yeah, what'd he say?
It's the kind of like...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Spot check.
How come I don't get that price?
Yeah, and, um...
What did he say?
You know, I, first, I, I sent him the picture just with the description, you know, just with the description. And he said, you know, I said, how much would this be? And it's fifty-six hundred dollars an hour, you know, an hour on the, on the bid there. And he said, he immediately answered that it would be between seven and eight grand. So, um...
So, you know what he's charging you?
So, his response, so his response was, that's a good price, but it, you know, one of the questions they asked were, were the drives refurbished as well?
Yeah.
Are, so is that, that's Roberto, right?
Yeah.
What?
Roberto.
Roberto.
Roberto?
Roberto.
Come on up.
Are the, are the drives?
Up here.
No, no, no.
Up here. Yeah, yeah, you're, you're a Nazi.
Name an address for the record.
No, no, no.
So, what? Are the drives, are the drives refurbished in this, you know, in this thing as well?
No, not the drives, just the, the system. Sometimes, basically, this is done to save some money.
Right.
Uh, this, this refurbished server still has three, four-year warranty on it. So, whatever happens to it, they're still fully responsible for it.
Right, right.
So...
Yeah, so the customer said, he said it was a good, he said it was a very good deal.
Yeah, I don't mind a good deal. I just wanna make sure that we're getting...
Right, then, because this says one-year warranty, and Roberto's saying three to four-year warranty.
No, we, we will get two, uh, three-year warranty on it.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good.
And, and also, this was publicly bid out. We went out to bid.
No, I know, I'm just, my question is, it's great to get a, a good price. It's, you wanna get the quality too. So, all right. Um, hearing no discussion. Poll vote, please.
Councilmember Yaffe?
Four.
Councilmember Saver?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Vice Mayor Brewer?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Unanimous.
Fifteen?
Uh, consideration and approval of a proposed program for the town's seventieth anniversary celebration. I was asked to look into this, about fireworks. I contacted, uh, Gucci and Zembelli. Um, I worked through Bell Harbor and the company they used. Zembelli has a, is who they used, and they have, uh, offices down here in, uh, Florida. Um, to put on an event that would be, you know, something halfway to end, I wrote, we, I looked up what I thought we would need. Fireworks, fencing, barricades, some generator or temporary lighting, uh, food trucks for some kind of, um, some food to give to, to have. Police department personnel, bus transportation. I would be requiring, you know, four, at least four small mini buses to, you know, ferry people back and forth. Um, portlets, some giveaways. I have the DJI. I didn't really have that targeted in, but it's from all accounts, that's not gonna be a great expense. But it's roughly fifty thousand dollars to do this event, um, give or take. All right. Most of my, most of my hard numbers, or my pretty good numbers, a little less than what I budgeted for. So, but I would say that it could go up or down.
And that's for how, and that's for how many people?
Uh, a minimum of eight hundred to a thousand.
Yeah, you know, I, I have an idea in reference to this. Um, well, I guess for discussion, do we need a motion?
All right, I'll move it.
Um, I'll second it. Um, you know, I, I know in years past, we've had events that were actually at least partially underwritten by sponsors. And I think, um, you know, I certainly support the notion of having a seventieth anniversary party, and it was very nice having the, uh, the fireworks and everything like that. But comparing ourselves to Bell Harbor is not an accurate comparison, because they have, um, they have resort tax funds, which we don't. So, any money that we spend comes out of our operating budget. And what I would suggest is that, you know, we do make investment in our seventeenth anniver, seventieth anniversary, um, but I would say, let's go, let's try to establish a fund and then have, like, do a match. Let's say, you know, either the people in the business district, or, you know, the parks and recreation department, or, or someone could go out and solicit funds from private donations, and let's try to raise twenty-five grand, and then we'll match twenty-five grand.
I already, I already have one or two people interested in sponsoring.
Yeah, it shouldn't be hard. I'm sure there's...
Like a thousand dollars, you know, something to start.
Yeah, or, or, you know, just have a schedule of sponsorships. We can have, like, a major sponsor and minor sponsors. And I'm sure...
A lot of developers in town, some hotels.
The Broad Foundation might wanna kick in some bucks. They have to be asked, at least.
Well, I think, well, I, I agree with you. I think we should probably...
Developers.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
I, I think what, what we could do is, you know, allow the manager to, to make those calls and to...
Okay, but let's, but...
But, yeah, but...
If he doesn't get it, then what, what do you want to do?
Kind of on a tight time.
Well, no, I mean, I, you, you have to make a determination tonight whether we're gonna proceed with this or not, whether, whether we raise funds or not.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And also, it's a commitment, and if we are able to raise some money to offset this, and that's sponsors, that's great. But if not, it's gonna proceed.
But also, eight hundred to a thousand people, I mean, we're hoping we could get it higher than that.
Right.
So, we've gotta watch the budget along those lines. Obviously, the fireworks, it doesn't, it doesn't cost more for more people to watch it, but it's, you know, the same time...
You're bringing more people out.
Food and supplies and everything else does increase.
It would be strict, you know, it would be a strict Bay Harbor Island resident to get anything, like, as a giveaway.
But how, but how are we gonna do that?
Similar, just so we deal with the, uh...
Picnic?
Picnic.
Is that how you do it, or wait?
No, it'd be a little stricter.
No, but what, no, what I think we should do is, is restrict access to the island, that you can't get there unless if you have, you show your...
We'll let you.
But if you're doing this on the causeway, aren't you closing?
Closing.
Aren't you closing the causeway?
Yeah, we can do that.
Right, so at that point, you're restricting access to the town.
Yeah, I think we can.
People from coming in from the side.
Closing the, the whole causeway, all four lengths?
Yeah.
Yeah, for closing out.
I know it sounds, it sounds drastic, but we've done it quite often, regu, on a regular basis. Yeah, it, it does happen. We do do it for maintenance on the bridge and for other reasons. We've closed it down.
I, I just think that, that...
That was two in the morning.
We should be stringent in regards to restricting it to residents, because it's something that, that, to have the privilege of, of being there and have this event, and we're gonna spend this kind of money, we don't wanna deny residents the ability to...
No, we're agreeing. It's restrictive causeway access. In other words, people coming in from the east, coming in causeway access to the party, to Bay Harbor residents. But when you said before, restricting access into Bay Harbor, that's...
No, 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 to the causeway island, I'm sorry, to the actual event. They can enter the town, but, but to the actual event, yeah.
Will there be any parking for residents? There's not enough space.
We would, that's what the buses were for, would have people wa, you could either walk or would have a series of four, four shuttles dropping you off.
Yeah, if there's no, if we're cutting off the causeway, we can have on, you know, up and down, can Congress, it's all pedestrian. It would be, there's no car, there are no cars.
But we should, but, but the actual shuttle bus can go around the entire town and pick people up, and that's the whole point.
That was the plan.
That theoretically, you could actually walk outside of your home or your building, and, and, and you can either walk, or you could take the shuttle, and the shuttle will take, will have trips around until the event's over. So, and that's what Bell Harbor did, you know, and, and it worked fine.
And I would like to know, how are we going to restrict this? Because I think that's gonna be extremely difficult.
Don't use the word restricted. How we're gonna monitor that.
Monitor.
Well, you try to do it the same way you do the annual picnic. I mean, you have a...
You have to have tickets. You have to come in and get your ticket with proof of ID. And usually, you present the ticket as you're walking in, and you get your wristband.
It's easier.
You get your wristband. If you have a wristband, then you're entitled to...
It's, it's not hard.
You have, you're entitled to food. If you come in and you, say you're a guest, I mean, I haven't really thought it this far, but if you come in with a guest who doesn't have the wristband, they could, maybe they can come and watch, but they can't have, they can't have food. They can't have anything that we're giving away.
Well, that's never, you know, people's...
Stand there alone.
Right. If they, you know, when people buy, when people come and get, pick up their tickets, if, look, if they have four people living in their house, three people, they get those three tickets. If they wanna invite...
Yeah, I don't, I think we should...
Or even that the other person, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we need to...
We can figure that part out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, now, the only thing I would say, though, is we've got, you know, we have to figure out whether or not we're budgeting and what we're budgeting tonight. As far as sponsorship, I, I love the idea, except I think we have to, before we start speaking to sponsors, I have to see what kind of, I think we'd have to see what kind of publicity we're trying to get, because that encourages, uh, sponsors. If you're, if you're just keeping for Bay Harbor residents and not publicizing it anywhere else, where you're not gonna get, you know, try and get a story out of, in the Herald, well, nobody reads the Herald, but some history in the Herald, or, or something on local news or something like that, you tend not to get a lot of corporate sponsors. But if you're gonna try and get some kind of little news story on, and you mention that when you're trying to get a sponsor, it helps get a little bit more money.
All right.
So, I think you have to have that before you talk to them.
That's a good idea, too, yeah.
Question, since this is in January, are we doing the annual five K, ten K walk runs?
It's the same day, in the morning.
It's the same day, okay.
Oh, wow.
Okay, 'cause I haven't seen anything about that yet. Maybe I missed it, but...
Run to the festival.
Right.
Different time.
Yes, and that's, that's another one. We don't close. We do close.
And we get sponsorship for that, right?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. We weren't doing it the last couple of times.
No.
On the third day?
We just budgeted.
Is it on Monday?
No, Sunday.
Sunday? January twenty-second, January twenty-first?
Second. It's the twenty-second, it's a Sunday. I hope it is.
I don't think so. All right, we have public comment.
All right, so, we have public...
Leo?
Leo?
January twenty-second's a Monday.
Is it, is it a Monday?
So, it's the twenty-third. It must be the, maybe this is a typo. The twenty-second's a Monday, right? Yeah, Sunday's the twenty-first.
Okay, then it's the twenty-first. That's a, that's my mistake.
Oh, Sunday, and then the price is double.
Yeah. Come on, Monday's how big?
Sorry.
Good evening again, Leo Corniero at, uh, ten fifteen ninety-third street. Um, I was looking at the details of the breakdown of the cost. I think the fireworks alone were like twenty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, the cost of the whole party's around fifty thousand, right?
Right.
So, um, look, as much as I love fireworks, I grew up in Orlando, and I was a kid, and I moved over here after graduate from Florida State.
Don't know.
I know, right?
I know, right.
Twenty thousand dollars, I think it just sounds like a lot of money. Um, and, you know, um, Councilmember Kelly Reed earlier, she saved, she said the phrase of disciplined portfolio management. And that kinda rings a bell with, like, discipline, management of, to make twenty thousand dollars for fireworks, just sounds like a lot. I mean, I live on Ninety-third Street, and now traffic for the pickup of the school is on that street. And I think that twenty thousand dollars could be better spent on, um, striping that street now, because if you're a kid and you're walking through that street, there's all this extra traffic there now. I'm sure that's probably in the plans that JC may fill me in later. Um, another idea, maybe get some of that twenty thousand dollars, we'll do like a spring break camp, right? Sometimes, spring, spring breaks out, parents still have to work, maybe they don't go on vacation. Maybe provide something. I don't know.
We are.
Well, I'm, I so moved it. I closed on my house on February eighteenth.
Congratulations.
So, I was...
You're gonna have a lot of...
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Perfect. I guess just the main point is, like, twenty thousand dollars sounds like a lot. And at thirty thousand dollars, I think we'd have a heck of a party, and I think we could save the fireworks, especially coming off of New Year's. We're probably gonna see fireworks in December thirty-first, and then seeing it three weeks later, it's not gonna be such, so nostalgic, nostalgic. But anyway, thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
All right, we have John Vedder. And, hold on, Mr. Manager, just so you know the, the clock.
Yes, absolutely. John Vedder, one zero three five zero, West Bay Harbor Drive, Bay Harbor Islands, Florida. Um, I believe property tax bills are coming out this month.
Tomorrow.
And I just wanna remind you that fireworks are literally tax dollars going up in smoke. I'd rather see it used for, like, a men's room on this floor, or almost any other type of thing. If it was a hundredth anniversary, maybe, seventy-fifth anniversary, maybe. But I think it's, uh, poor timing to think about having tax dollars go up in smoke.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
I have a question about the numbers. Um, how many people usually come to the picnic, more or less?
It's about a thousand, and the eighty-five hundred dollars that we budgeted would be in keeping with, um, that amount of, that kind of food. It wouldn't be that type of food. It would be something less, you know, more like smaller things to, to, to eat. But, so it wouldn't be, it's enough to handle eight hundred, at least eight hundred people.
And, and also keep in mind that the concept of doing this in January was to coincide with the anniversary of the school also, that there was supposed to be a conjunction of, of working together with the school and the Broad family. So, you know, there's some synergy supposedly behind this, not just that we're doing our own anniversary, but the school's anniversary as well. So...
I'm having a hard time just imagining the logistics of that many people getting out there, you know, getting shuttled out. I mean, so, the, the causeway will be closed all the way, uh, to, like, East Bay Harbor Drive? You're gonna close off Kane Concourse as well? Somebody said Kane Concourse will be open?
Yeah, the causeway island. It would be from, like...
From West Bay Harbor. I'm sorry, West Broadview.
West Broadview, or maybe, maybe down to the terrace.
So, you could ride your bicycle over it. The bridge will be open, and is, is that a problem, or...
The idea.
No, I'd probably keep, I mean, what I recommend is you keep one, I mean, since we're closing off the causeway, close off one of the streets, make one of them two-way, and that way you have pedestrians, so all the pedestrians on one side, 'cause we're encouraging thou, potentially a thousand or more people to walk from East Island over.
I just can't imagine.
I just have a ba, I mean, what you see here is a basic plan.
Right, I was just saying, this is something later on, but I'm just saying it's, you know, trying to tell a thousand people to walk from East Island on the one, uh, bike path, or, you know, that's not gonna work.
I mean, I, I just like to think that our manager and our chief can, can handle this. I mean, I mean, I'd like to think, Ron, you can, you can make this work logistically?
I'm pretty sure we can.
All right, well, then, I'll take you for your word. So, all right, um, we have a motion, a second, and can we have a poll vote on it? And, and with the amendment that we are also going to solicit, um, sponsors.
Yes.
And the manager will work on that, too.
So, budget up to fifty thousand?
Up to fifty, and Ron, you said...
I would ask, just make it fifty-five, just in case, but I don't, if you wanna keep it fifty, that's fine.
Yeah, I said, let's do it fifty and get some sponsors.
You could always come back with a change order.
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Well, well, it's not what I, that wasn't my amendment, just for the record, okay? My amendment was that we go twenty-five, and then we force everybody to raise twenty-five. But just, just for the record, that was my amendment.
Okay.
Not go fifty and then try to raise more money on top of that. So...
The problem, the problem is, is if we, if you came up, legally, if they came up a little bit short, you, you know, what do you do? You cancel every, you know, you wanna be able to...
That wasn't the amendment. It was just encouraging, that it wasn't even an amendment. It's just to encourage fundraising, right?
No, actually, no. I, I wanted to save taxpayers' money. I understand. The only comments that we had on this were against this. So, uh, just for the record, because of the comments that were made, I'm gonna vote against it, 'cause I because of the comments that were made, I'm gonna vote against it, because I was really undecided either way, but, you know, if a hundred percent of the public comments were against it, I'm against it.
Right, but then I don't understand your amendment, Isaac, which is that if we, we're gonna plan this, but if we don't raise X amount of dollars, we don't go forward?
Right, if it was, if we were voting on twenty-five thousand dollars, and then raising another twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, I would vote...
All right, how about this idea then?
The problem though is, on November thirteenth, it's really hard, I understand what you're doing, but it's really difficult to do that, you can't go ahead and plan an event for two months down the road, with a contingency that if you don't raise enough money, it's not gonna go forward, because you're gonna make a commitment and have to pay deposits to this...
How about if we approve twenty-five thousand for the party, and if we can't raise the other twenty-five for the fireworks, then we just have a party without fireworks?
Yeah, that's a good option, I mean...
I'm fine with that, but how, how much in advance do you have to, you know, reserve the fireworks, that's all.
If I don't do this now, it's, they need at least six weeks to...
Right, so if you don't commit to doing it, then the fireworks are out, which is fine, if that's the, you know, the sense of the council, but...
Fireworks and no food, you don't have food, eat before you go.
That's the draw.
I mean, Val Harbor theoretically spent, what, three hundred, quarter million to three hundred thousand?
We're not doing that comparison.
No, we're not, they, no, we're not, I mean, we're spending...
Seventy-fifth dollars later, even then, I couldn't justify...
But even then, that made no sense.
Well, but I, you know, but I think, I think that, no, but I was just gonna say that, you know, I think that the fact that we've passed our military, with the lowest military rate in nine years, you know, it's not as if we're raising taxes in order to pay for this, this is something that we knew up until last year, that we wanted to do something, now...
This has a budget impact.
Twenty-eight thousand five hundred, that's what we thought it was.
No, I remember.
Say anything about, Jordan, this doesn't say what the budget impact is on...
Oh, no, I know that, but it's something that we've discussed for about a year, and now we're kinda like at the end of the year.
So, the only reason that we're doing this this year is because it's the seventieth birthday of the school, I mean, we don't give...
No, no, the town.
The school also is having its...
Sixtieth.
Their fiftieth, sixtieth, so we want, but, my question is, don't you usually do twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, I mean, what makes, what makes seventy...
We did sixty.
Ron, did you say you needed six weeks in advance for the fireworks?
They, they need to...
Okay, but that still gives you a month, right? To come up, to see if we get the sponsorship, and then if we got the sponsorship, we have the fireworks, if we don't get the sponsorship in the next month, then we just have a party, everything else.
I gotta be honest with you, I think, why can't, you know, twenty-five, fifty, those are gold, you know, those are special birthdays, what is the school doing for its sixtieth birthday? That you say they're sending, no, because...
This is a lot of money for something.
Well, this is the thing, we're doing it supposedly in conjunction with the school, okay, but I don't see in any of our planning, in any of our celebrations, that we're...
Like, what contribution?
What contribution the school is doing, what are they doing, how are we celebrating this together? And seventieth is not that important, seventy-five, I think, is a little, you know...
But, even that number, here's...
I'm gonna vote against it.
Here's the problem I have, is that even if it was, even if we were at seventy-five, okay, regardless, the problem I have here is, goes, we go back to, we had budgeted twenty-eight five, you know, there was always the talk about fireworks and everything else, but the budget we had put at twenty-eight five, here we are at the last minute, according to you, as far as when we have to order fireworks and everything else, and we're essentially doubling the budget, that's, there's a problem.
Well, you know what, honestly, you, you asked me to plan for something for our anniversary, the seventieth, this is what it will cost, you're not, I'm... The original, the original idea was to have something at the community center, more of like a, I wanna say cocktail party kind of a thing, where, you know, looking at pictures and a lot of memorabilia from the town, and I think I was pretty clear, there was a lot of, you know, they had already started down that road and were well down it, in coordination with the, with the school.
And what was the budget on that?
There really was, and I think that...
Twenty-eight five.
No, actually...
No, I was, I had only budgeted ten thousand dollars for that.
And I know the Bustle family were gonna be making some contribution to...
And how much, when, what part was the school playing, you know, I hear the school, the school, the school...
Well, we had, we had several meetings with the school principal at the time, Mr. Rodriguez, with the Broad Foundation, and with Regina, the community center, we have, we're planning a different type of event. The school was doing in January their own event where they had the children participate, that we were going to have the kids from the media center do some videos with our old, older residents, that may have some historical perspective on the town, so we were going down a totally separate, different road, so, this is not what we're talking about at this point.
Right, so last meeting, the fireworks were brought into it, and you're gonna have, if you're gonna, if you're gonna close the causeway and have, invite people out there, it was, it was an event-driven thing, it's too close to April, honestly, or to the town picnic, that I wouldn't, if we're not gonna, if we're gonna not do something a little out of the unusual...
Can we do a full street party on Kane Concourse block party?
Well, we're doing the, the five K on that day, so, you know, you know, just...
Well, combined, it's, I'm saying, we agree, like a street party, block off Kane Concourse, food trucks up and down, we don't need fireworks in the daytime.
Yeah, but it's early in the morning.
That, that, that event ends at nine o'clock, so, people aren't coming out.
I guess that could be, that could make a difference, right?
But you start, you start the main party at two, ten to two.
Why don't you just do it at our picnic?
Yeah, this is, it's too much.
Because it's too late, you know?
April's too late?
No, no, we don't want to do it...
Because the anniversary's in seventeen, they're pushing it back to January of eighteen.
The anniversary is this year.
A daytime street party on Kane Concourse, block off part of, block up Kane Concourse, food trucks up and down, the whole thing, we can do something there, that'd be really magnificent, you don't need fireworks in the daytime, music, food, get people out there, I think that's a probably easier way, a lot cheaper.
You know, honestly, we missed, we missed the anniversary.
Well, it's this year.
We can't like do this retro, it's not this year, well, it's this year, it's seventeen.
It is this year.
Yeah, but I mean, well, I mean...
You know, we kinda missed the vote on this one?
Yes.
Well, we did, but, if you want to do, if you want to do a party, you gotta do it a little more inexpensively.
So, let's take a vote.
I need a clarification, because the motion was made...
At the end of the clarification, after the vote, Mark.
The motion was made by, no, but I don't know what the motion is, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Bruder, seconded by Councilman Savar.
Right.
So, that is the motion.
I'll withdraw it, too.
I withdraw.
I'll draw in a second.
There's no motion.
We have to lose nobody.
We don't have to do anything.
It would be appropriate to do something.
No, that's up to us.
It's a budget that I don't...
It's just about twenty-five and the...
So, we're not just saying, roll it over to the seventy-fifth anniversary.
Right, roll it.
So, we're not gonna do anything for our seventieth anniversary?
We can, we can do the food truck.
We can do a trapneuter release event.
No, I mean, I think, I think we should do something, I mean, we did agree to an appropriate money in the budget to do something.
We don't have to spend it.
Right now, there's no motion in the seconds.
All right, well, all right, so we're gonna do nothing, all right? All right, number sixteen.
Item sixteen, approval of a change order, the final change order, twenty-eight, in favor of M&amp;J Construction, Pinellas County, in a matter of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ten cents. This was to finish the painting or the steel that we put in, the initial steel, this started out over, God, it's over a year that we've been negotiating with them, the original request was for three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, through various negotiations, that was reduced to one hundred and eighty-seven, the price that you see there.
Ron, you don't have to explain it more, just, I just wanted to clarify, you said the word "final," right?
Final.
This is it.
Yeah, I'll move it for discussion.
Second.
Can I have a motion, a second, discussion?
And, so also, you know, we've gone back and forth, I mean, you know, for everyone's clarification out there, we started off eleven to twelve million, we're up close to eighteen, we've had discussions at nauseam, we looked at who we could hold accountable, and basically come up with nothing, we tried, so, this was just a case of concrete work hides a lot of things, and in discussions with the manager the other day, we were talking about to really seek, you know, what's going on underneath the concrete, and correct me in the jargon, that would be like a million dollar estimate?
Destructive testing is very extensive to do what we...
So, it's, it's easy in hindsight to look back now and say that we should have spent that million, and, and then it would have just told us that we needed to spend eighteen million, so, I'd like to say that, so this will be probably the final...
No, 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 probably.
But I need, just the final discussion, because I think there's a perception out there, you know, I've even mentioned it a few times, like, what are we doing, are we taking legal action, that was mentioned once, so, this sort of puts the current bridge to bed, there's no legal action, nobody's gonna be held accountable or throwing any money, this is the last change order, that's that, until we redo the bridge.
We'll leave that quite, you know, all the other questions open, but it's, because I don't want to put anything on record that we're a hundred percent certain, anything else, I will just simply say, from my understanding, this is the final cost, this is the final change order, we're done with the costs.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I want to know on this one, that's...
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say either that we're...
Where, where is this money coming from? Like, where's all this money?
The seventieth anniversary.
It's the causeway reserve, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, all right, so a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hold on.
Councilman Yaffe?
Four.
Councilman Missalver?
Against.
Councilman Reed?
No choice but four.
Councilman Fuller?
Again, no choice but four, same thing.
Excellent, I'm in my...
Well, you have a choice.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
No, we don't, we get sued.
Ditto.
Need to clarify.
Oh, four, yeah, that is...
Court of law.
We're all acting with four.
Okay.
All right, number seventeen.
Number seventeen. Discussion requested by Councilmember Yaffe regarding fees charged by the building department for change of contractor, did you want to...
Sure, this was brought to my attention by a contractor in town who had commented on the fact that we're charging fifty percent of the original permit fee if you want to change your contractor, now, this provides our resolution that we amended and adopted last year, provides for, you know, a building permit for new constructions, three percent of the job cost, so, you know, if you're spending eight hundred thousand dollars, it's whatever, twenty-some thousand dollars, whatever it is, and if you simply are changing your contractor, that could be ten thousand, it was related to me that a couple of people in town who were doing work on the West Island ended up having to spend four thousand dollars just to change their contractor, so, you know, I, I think this slipped by us, you know, last year, and Ron, you know, has the history of this, this...
It's interesting.
...type of fee has been around for many, many years, but it's just increased, and Marlene provided us with a memo that shows what our, you know, neighboring communities are charging, and it's really just a ministerial thing, you know, I mean, you change your contractors for any number of reasons, you're unhappy with them, they go bankrupt, they walk off the job, whatever, you know, they disappear, and to have to spend thousands of dollars just to do that, doesn't make any sense.
What, what changes do we have to do administratively in order to change the contract?
We need to change the resolution, it's not an administration...
Isaac is asking, what does the town administration do?
What is the building department, what expense are they incurring by me going in there and saying, okay, I'm taking out contractor A, and I'm putting in contractor E?
Very little, very little, two seconds.
So then let's make the fee very little.
Right, I think it's, I think it should be a hundred and fifty dollars, which is what was suggested, Val Harbor charges one fifty, Sunny Isles a hundred, North Miami Beach a hundred, you know?
One fifty's fine.
Can I just say, just so you know how it, how it got this way, back in nineteen ninety-four, when this was originally approved, it reads, change of contractor, thirty percent of permit fee with a minimum of forty dollars, so the permit fees back then were very low, very low, so, in nineteen, in two thousand and four, it was changed, when it was revised, it stayed at thirty percent, again, it was, there was no...
No, no, make it a, you know what, make it a hundred, Sunny Isles Beach is a hundred dollars, I don't think we have...
Hundred is fine, so bring a resolution in January.
For a hundred dollars, there you go, done, all right, number nineteen.
Item nineteen, discussion, and really just your feedback on the, the draft agreement from the Miami State School Board, chasing...
Why is it only two years?
That's, 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 that's four years, I think it has a renewal period...
It doesn't renew, I'm just asking.
Well, it's a weird renewal period, it's like, you know, you've got renewal, but then you can extend another two years if both sides agree to it, which...
I mean, that's, that type of renewal period, what they have in the Sunny Isle Beach contract.
It was very, very close to Sunny Isles, which, you know, depending on who you speak to, it actually has controlled, or according to the school board, their growth in student population has leveled off, I'm not sure, this is modeled pretty close to that, with some changes, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we got in there was that if some, something came to our attention, that we could pass it on, and it wouldn't be fluffed off, so, if we, if something comes to our attention, we can bring it up to them, our, the concerns, obviously, of the council are that, relating to them, is we just don't want everybody to think, there's nothing going on in that you are going to address what's the issue here.
And how do we...
They will, there's reporting, monthly reporting?
Yeah, I know, but, but, one of the things is, it says that we're, they're gonna use LexisNexis, and, but then they say they have no financial obligation, there's the assumption that we're gonna pay for the program, but...
We are paying for it.
No, I know that, but I'm saying...
That was discussed...
No, no, I understand that, but other than the program...
Council meeting?
Yeah, but, but other than the program...
Yes.
The actual staffing, that's on their side.
Yes.
I just want to make it abundantly clear.
We will train them.
It doesn't say that in there.
No, but it does talk about, they're not gonna spend any money on it.
Yeah, it says that.
The problem there becomes, if they even want to say, look, it costs us this number of dollars for, they have an argument, say, we had to spend X number of hours, and our people need to pay, there's a, there's a problem.
It just needs to be, it just needs to be clarified that, that the staffing, as far as verifying, is on their end, and we don't bear that cost.
The reason, the reason it's written like that, in Sunny Isles, Sunny Isles agreed to pay for...
Now, I know what they're...
People, and we're not, and this is why that language...
But I don't like the way they set it up anyways, I gotta tell you, there's a few issues here, I mean, you know, first of all, you know, we're picking up a bill with no cap, there is absolutely no limitation here whatsoever, if they want to keep running it, running it, running it, if you got somebody, we're paying for it, I have a problem with that, second, it just simply says that if they find somebody, when they do the mailings, and the mailing's gonna cost us probably, you know, four, five, six, seven thousand dollars, just for the certified return receipt mailings, each time they do it.
They've already done that.
Each time, I'm saying each time, but we're gonna be picking up the cost every time they do that, so they do it once, twice, three times, you're looking at five, six grand every time, but, the fact of the matter is, you've got a scenario here where it simply just says, and we know this, that they're just gonna go back to the standard program with their normal policy as to how they want to handle it, case by case, well, they haven't been doing a great job on that up to now, and we're just picking up a bill just to go back to the same system we're at currently.
There's a, under section two funding, it says, the school board shall obtain consent from the parents, guardians prior to conducting a search, so what if the parent guardian says no, and then you're done, that's it, I mean...
And that came up at the meeting, and we were, we asked that same question, and that's a red flag for them, so then they, they bring them in and they interview them further, and, and, and they, it's, their focus done, and...
But I mean...
It kicks off an additional meeting with the school.
Yeah, but, no, but the problem is even there, it doesn't say there's actually any enforcement, they're not sharing the information with us, that's one thing, and they know they can't, but I understand that, but at the same time, is, we're essentially paying for something on a limited basis, with no knowledge of anything's actually happening, what's gonna end up coming back to, you know, what, what we're gonna get out of our money, and the only thing we can do is after sixty days, say, you know what, if you give them sixty days, and they'll say, we don't want to do it, but you already spent the money, and we have no idea whether you're taking students out that aren't supposed to be here.
That's an additional thing.
I'd still rather look at our earlier agreement, you know, we, we were talking about last time, putting them on notice, that they were in breach of the contract, and I think that might be the stronger way, let them, let them have to spend some time and money trying to get the wrong students out of there, I mean, on a side thing, just another small thing, you know, as a, I don't want to create a hassle for our real residents, you've got to hear, hear that they're gonna have to come in, bring their original documents between eleven AM and four PM on the week that they provide, you've got a lot of working parents that are not able to do it between eleven AM and four PM, they're not gonna take a day off of work.
Well, when they bring their, when they bring their kids, they, they have to register their kids during that time.
But I'm saying, if it's at seven thirty, eight AM, and I can understand the school doesn't want parents sticking around a large number, then write a drop-off, there's a time between that and eight, and nine AM where they can do it, yeah, eleven to four, that doesn't work.
First of all, they can do it by, you know, kindergarten, first grade, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I mean, there's many different ways that they can do it, so that they, it's all a matter if they want, and as far as the mailing goes, I mean, they mail out at the beginning of the year anyway, I, so are we bearing the cost of their mailings?
No.
Going to this, it says...
They have an argument for yes, they can just, they don't have to do their own, they can have, they can just use ours, and we have to pay for it.
And if they didn't come across it, when we went to the meeting, the only, the only thing we were gonna be providing them was to execute the LexisNexis, and that's...
Well, okay, let's, let's...
That's what we brought in. What, you know, what, you know, what says that they are gonna comply with the terms of this agreement when they violated our original agreement, you know, I, I think we're just, you know, they're just kind of, they're passing the ball back to us, you know, to do work that they really should be doing, and they should be funding, et cetera, et cetera, I say we go back to the original agreement and make them comply with the original agreement, and if they don't, let's, you know, let's...
That's what I was saying a few minutes ago, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and I don't appreciate as a council member seeing like a new agreement when there's no update on the violation of the old agreement.
How are they on that?
Well, you know, what, where are we at with that? That's what I'm more interested in.
This, this one is really too, this does not...
All this information that they're gonna provide us is gonna be non-detailed information that's probably public, you know, public information eventually anyway, we're just, you know what I'm saying, it's...
Ron, I know you were making a valid, you know, you were making a nice attempt here, but the problem with this is it, it doesn't do anything, and that's exactly, I think, what Isaac's saying as well, is that, you know, the fact of the matter is, even if they state the letter of the agreement in this, the problem is, even if they stay, state to it, it says specifically that they will look at it on a case-by-case basis and evaluate individually, that means nothing, that means they can take a look at it and say, you know what, we're gonna waive this, and we're gonna waive the next, and we're gonna waive the other.
So what is the, what does the agreement that is enforced, say, with respect to verification of the student population, if anything?
It doesn't.
Okay, so it doesn't, so, so, so we can talk about this over and over again, you know, for months and years at a time, about address verification, we don't like this agreement, I mean, what, what do you on the council want? What are, what are you asking specifically the school board to do to, to meet your goal of address verification, and I think it is important to make sure that the students who are in this school are within this district, you don't like this program, what is it that you want, it's, Josh, it's okay to say that they're in violation of the current agreement because there's more than twelve hundred students at the school, and they're capped at twelve hundred, what is it that we are actually asking the school board to do?
Okay, so the first thing is...
And how would you want them to do it?
So, well, the first thing is, what, what, we have to agree, what, what, what is a resident? A resident is somebody who lives here full-time, who is, their homestead is here, because there's a lot of parents who rent an apartment, or have their...
You can't say that their homestead is here, there are a lot of people who live in, who live full-time in rental housing, it's not a homestead.
No, I don't mean that, I mean, people who have a primary residence.
It's, it's not a perfect agreement, but it's, it's, you have to start from somewhere.
I think you need to bring it back to them and clarify those things that we all know, we, I mean...
No, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, I think we go back to, it goes back to what Bob was saying, but here's the answer, is that, I think we just need to move to enforce the earlier agreement, the earlier agreement limits the number of students, so in order for them to comply with what they've already signed, they have to take action, and under The earlier agreement limits the number of students, so in order for them to comply with what they've already signed, they have to take action, and under their own rules, they have to give, they have to give preference to students that are actually within this district. So their only way, their only way they can comply with the earlier signed agreement is to do this filtering out themselves at their own cost, their own time, and actually process the product.
So remind me, how many students are at the K8 now?
1,450?
Okay, so, so.
No, no, no.
1,360, no, 1,360 students with every day.
So what if, so just out of curiosity, what if 1,300 students at this school actually are entitled to be at this school, then what do you do?
And that's the argument they make, that, that's what they're saying.
If, if they have that, they can come back to us, they can talk, and we can see about amending if we need to. But at this point, at this point, we have to go into the assumption that that's not the number. There's no way for us to do it, I mean, this, this doesn't do it.
Josh, the only, the only thing I'm afraid of, sorry, it's, you're, we, we rely on that school for our programming and a lot of stuff, and.
And that agreement referred to it as joint use, that allows.
That's that joint use agreement, and.
So they're going to lock, you, you're scared, they're going to lock us out.
Well, listen, you, it could.
Don't, you know, no, they, believe me, they need us just as bad as, you know, we need them. I, I don't think you can approach it from that defensive, passive perspective. You need, you know, you, we need to jump up and down, and if we have to file on like, some type of injunction to prevent them from building that extra 2,800 square feet, which I guarantee you will be filled up with brand-new kids, and they'll come back with statistics that there's 1,600 kids in that before you turn around, I can guarantee you. If we have to, you know, I mean, I think this council should take the position that enough is enough.
You know, it's hard to believe that we're talking about another government agency, a county, a county entity, like we're talking about a utility company or a vendor or a private company, but, you know, that we have to go after. So, you know, do you think this can be accomplished politically, I mean, and formally, that, you know, so, so the school board works for the county commission, right?
No, the school board is autonomous, the school board is its own separate entity.
Okay, so, so we go to the state, you know, who, so who do they report to? The school board.
For, hold on one second, Craig and Frank, did you guys have the conversation with the school board, I think after the last meeting, we talked about the fact of having a conversation with them with regard to the.
The first thing they were supposed to do is provide the draft, and my, and they did that, I looked at the draft, I made a suggestion, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, but I suggest, Josh, or any one of the council, give Ron the things, the provisions that you would want to have added to make this a better agreement. I think that it's time for a new agreement, and a good agreement, and a strong agreement, so the fact that they gave us this as a draft, excuse me, doesn't mean it has to be the be-all and all. I don't want to travel on an old agreement that we have to litigate, if we can get the terms that would make the council feel better, because a lot of the agreement is okay, that's my.
Respectfully, I disagree, because if they're not, I mean, if we're not enforcing the previous agreement and they're not, they're not complying with it, what good is any other future agreement? You have to make sure that someone sticks to their word, and if they're not sticking to their word the first time, it's foolish for us to go back and say, well, create another agreement, because you may, you may keep to it, you may not, but we'll keep to ourselves.
You probably won't know that until you file a lawsuit.
But I'd like to have that conversation, I think what we talked about is having a conversation, notice, put them on notice that they are in violation of it, if they want to comply and fix it themselves so they're no longer in violation, we can work with them, if not, we may have to.
Let me do this, let me do this, why don't we try to, let's give it one shot, and then, and if we can't resolve anything by January, then, then why don't we take it to the next, the next level? I mean, let me, let me do this, let me have a meeting with the manager and meet with, with the superintendent and, and with our school board member and see if maybe we can allow them to, to kind of get their house in order a little bit, so we're on the same page. Because, you know, when I spoke to the assistant superintendent prior to the last meeting, she assured me that they were working on this agreement back then. So before we showed up and they all showed up to the council meeting, I was on the assumption that they were actually, had the agreement that they were going to bring with them. Now, they showed up with something that literally is a photocopy from Sunny Isles Beach, I mean, it literally is, well, I, I got it.
Jordan, without due respect, she came in here, she had any agreement or any idea that she was going to be amendable to anything, she wouldn't have come in here the way that she came in here and have been so aggressive towards all of us. She did not, under no circumstances did she come in here wanting to work with it. The first thing that this agreement has to have is a cap on the amount of students, otherwise.
We already have that.
No, but I'm.
But let, let.
Wait, wait, one second, Jordan, I know the school inside out, the reason they're building the brand-new portion is to relieve what we already have, it's not for them to open up the door in a new agreement, Craig, for them, I kind, I have to agree with Josh, we have, we have, we have an agreement, it's supposed to be this amount. The reason they're doing it is because we're over capacity, we're building this new.
Over capacity in the individual classes, you're doubling up, you're doubling up classes, it's not.
Right, we're not, right, I mean, there are kids, I mean, in first grade, second grade, there's 30 kids with one teacher in a classroom, it's, it's out of control.
I know.
And the idea that we're just going to go to them, without due respect, Jordan, and sit with them and say to them, okay, well, you know, first of all, they were supposed to build this building a couple of years ago, we raised that money many years ago, we were put on hold, and it's been almost three years that we've been talking about this building. And if they're going to use this building as a, well, we'll build the building if you let us have more people, well, you know what, I agree with, I agree with Isaac, you know what, then don't build the building, and I'll just, with the people who raised the money for the basketball courts, we'll just build the basketball courts. Because it's about education and students, it's not about.
This, this town was not built to house a major educational complex. You know, this town was built around, you know, Bay Harbor Elementary School, which I'm sure when you went there had maybe 600 kids, 500 kids.
Smaller.
Huh?
It was less smaller.
It was, it was a lot, it was a lot smaller, and then, okay.
Where the field was.
You know, the, you know, the population got a little bit denser, but it didn't get that much denser where we have to like triple the size of the school, we can't handle it, our, our cops can't handle it, our, you know, the traffic can't handle it, we're not built for that. So that's why I'm, I'm certainly not supportive of building, yet, an additional structure, you know, over the basketball courts. I mean, honestly, I would do anything in my power to stop the construction of this new building, because the history is this, they had the little elementary school, and then they made it into a big elementary school, and then it got bigger, and they put portables on the, on the field. And we said, you know what, we don't want any more portables, get rid of the portables, they say, fine, we're going to build a permanent structure where the portables were, and we promise there are not going to be any portables. And then at that time, they said, we'll have 1,200 kids, well, you know, turn around, fast forward, we have 1,300, 1,360 kids there now, and, and, and growing, believe me.
What about the parking garage, threatening us to put a parking garage where the green field was and all that?
Well, I mean, but listen, you have to, and I don't have the answer to this, but you have to make a determination as to how many students at that school are really entitled to be there, because we're continuing to build housing in this community, and I know it's, I don't know what the extent of the population increase will be, but you're still going to be adding kids, and unless you, you don't want to split this district, and you don't want to say some.
Bob, you know what?
I'm saying our kids, Bay Harbor kids.
No, Bay Harbor, but if you, if you have to, if you have to split the district, maybe the kids, you know, from 96th Street South will have to go to this K913, which is at 80% capacity.
By the way, 96th Street meaning 96th Street.
I'm saying Surfside.
Remember, 96th Street splits us.
By the way, by the way, by the way, there was, there was a time, you may not know this, but there was a time when I went to school, middle school was separated by King Concourse. There was a time where half the town went to Nautilus and the other town went, no, went to, went to.
Somewhere on the beach.
No, in North Miami, what's, North Miami Beach, what's the?
Yeah, JFK.
JFK, whatever. But I, one second, what about Surfside? Why isn't Daniel, I think that we should reach out to Surfside and say to them, listen, because they, they have taken no participation, no help.
Surfside doesn't have a dog in this fight, this is our, this is our town.
Well, you're advocating getting Surfside out of the school.
No, I'm absolutely not saying that, but I'm saying, there's a, there's a solution, there's, you know, there's a solution that the school board can, 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 that's disposable to the school board.
Redistrict, I mean.
They can, they can change the district.
Well, we did that while we did Sunny Isles.
There's a boundary committee, I would, I would just ask, you know, I, listen, I, I have to deal with this, I mean, I know that.
We all have to.
No, I know.
There's not any more power than anyone else on this council.
No, no, listen, I, I.
But I can guarantee you.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying I do, but I feel for this, just like, you know, listen, and when everyone has their kids in the school, you know, believe me, my, my oldest son had the last two years of a double classroom, it's not easy to go through kindergarten with a double classroom, it's, it's, I, I feel for any parent that has to go through a double classroom, it's not fair to anybody.
Parents.
You know, a lot of parents are like that.
I've seen the dolphin.
No, I know, what I'm saying is, let's, let's give it to.
I want to know the score.
No, no, no.
I'm guessing.
No, but, but. No, but what I'm saying is that, that I don't think we lose anything to enforce it in January versus now, if we actually have a meeting with them and put them on notice.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think Craig is right, I think all of us on the council, those who, who have an interest in this, should tell the manager what it is you want in this agreement, because we could spend hours and hours and days and days discussing this, this isn't, if you don't think this is satisfactory, tell Craig or tell Ron what you want to see in this agreement, and then that'll give them some, something to work with.
What I would at least, we can always litigate, we can always give a notice of default, and I want to make one stab at doing this peacefully, but the way we want it, and if I could have the input, I, I didn't meet at the last meeting, but I think that we're going to have another come-to-the-god meeting, and I'd like to go over this contract and have the input from each of you of what you would want in the contract. Josh, if you can make this a contract with terms that would satisfy you or.
I don't want a contract with them, no, I, I mean, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I'm going to say this, I think the way to do this is what I was saying last time, which is I think you, you put them on notice, that you say, look, you can have a conversation, we're about to put you on notice of default, and we need to have a conversation, and if they want to come to some, if they want to try and come and propose some agreement or something afterwards, that will solve everything, and that they will actually agree to with, with teeth, with the enforcement, we will see about it. But I have no, I, I have absolutely no interest whatsoever in putting forth another agreement when we have one perfectly good that's out there that they're in violation of, I think they have to be, they have to know that they've got a downside, that if we don't come into something, we're just going to enforce the other, and I have a problem just.
And Josh, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, you know, you know, for example, I mean, I, I know some of us have relationships with board members, I know I have a relationship with a majority of the board members, you know, there's nine board members, I have relationships with at least five out of nine on a, on a good rapport. I would say, you know, a conversation with our, our board member and the superintendent should be customary, since they're, you know, listen, they're, they're a government entity like us, before we, we, nothing, nothing stops us from doing that.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying you have the conversation, but, but the idea of drafting a new agreement right now is useless.
Let's, let's have, let's, if, if we all can agree, I'd like to have a, a meeting with them, with the manager, and just express our frustration, because again, there's, you know, that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean.
I don't agree to that.
Well, you know, I don't agree to that.
I can tell you most board members don't know what goes on in Bay Harbor.
I mean, I, I don't care what relationship you have with the nine members of the school board, I've been on the school board audit committee, and I've dealt with every one of them for the last four or five years, and I know how the school board operates, that's why I can speak with such conviction, because I've seen it all in front of me.
Okay.
It's time, you know, the, what they understand is a legal letter, they understand black and white, you're in violation, fix it, and if there's anything, you know, I, I agree with Josh, no new agreement until the old agreement is, is, is back in order. So, and, and my number one thing is population, student population, if it's not 1,200, there's nothing to talk about, that's it, there's, you know, there's one thing, population, we agreed to 1,200, get it to 1,200, I don't care how you'd have to do it, but just get it to 1,200, period, and that's, there's, you know, any other agreement is meaningless until we get there.
Have you spoken to our board member about this, as far as the?
I have.
I mean.
You know, he, he knows, believe me, Martin knows every single thing that goes on there and here.
Yeah.
100%.
He knows everything, and he, and he, let me tell you, thank God, he is great, he's effective, and I think he can, he can get us to where we need to be, I'm sure, you know, somewhere or another.
Are we in agreement that we would like to send a letter?
Yes, I agree, yeah.
Yes.
So we're going to put them on notice.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the concessions of the town is that we would like to put the school board on notice that they are not in compliance with the.
Agreement.
Agreement, and that they have violated.
And how much time does it give them to respond?
30 days. So, maybe 30-day cure period, but we can work with them, and I don't want them kicking students out this, this year, but.
No, I know, but.
Believe me, they're not kicking, I understand.
What I'm saying is, they're going to respond, they're going to have to respond before our next meeting, so.
Well, that gives them 30 days to respond, by January, they need to respond, they need to respond to us, that gives them plenty of time.
Well, I still want to speak to our school board member.
Speak, do whatever you want to do. Lobby, speak, you know, do whatever you have to do, but we.
No, I know, but I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, and, and just for, again, for, for all of our sakes, you know, there, my understanding is that building has already gone up to bid, so are we also giving an opinion in regards to the building at this time?
No, we're not.
I have, listen, and I, and I, Isaac, tell me if you feel otherwise, because I mean, you, you, I don't think any of us have a problem with the building getting built, if we are 100% certain that it's not more students, if it's just our students, that's fine, it's a nice new building.
I think we're all.
Alright, it reduces the class size, it gives more, more facilities.
And, you know, it's funny, because I went by the site of where the basketball courts are, and I didn't realize that it's really in, it's inside the block, it's not on the terrace, it's, it's inside, it's one, like, one lot inside. So, I mean, that, that will have much less of an impact on the community.
And do you realize the people who donated that money?
Still sitting.
Child will be out of the school by the time that basketball court is built.
But they, well, I can't opine on that, I can't comment on that, but, but, yeah, I mean, I, so I'm not, I'm not so crazy against the building, but enroll, you know, the enrollment must be 1,200 or less, there's nothing else to talk about.
Move to adjourn.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, move to adjourn at 9:47.